Is there a sign up sheet there?
Fifteen minutes early or you're late?
How are you doing? Riggs, you look very nice.
Thank you. Let us pray.
Amen.
My name is Pastor Pastor Harmon of Union Baptist Church of Elgin. I want to invite you all to have a silly kickoff this Sunday immediately after our worship service. Our service begins at 10:30 AM, and the silly kickoff will be roughly around another 30 AM. And so, uh, the silly kickoff is to benefit our benevolent community, so the money that you need to...
Benefit our church members as well as our community, for those that are in need. And so, I like to begin our time with a word of scripture, and after the word of scripture, I'll say a prayer. In First Timothy 2, verses 1 through 3, it says, "I urge you then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made to all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peacefully and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. This is good, and pleases God, our Savior, who wants all people to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth." Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are here to discuss topics that will benefit the people in this community and our county. We want to think about how we can make life easier for everyone. Come and give us the wisdom to make right decisions. Let us not make biased decisions, but decisions based on solving the problems for our children of today and the generations of tomorrow. Be our leader during this meeting. Show us the way to do good and right with kindness and grace. Give us direction, and let us not think with our own selfish interests. Open our eyes to the spiritual solutions and help us to make our community great and better. May all this that is decided tonight bring you glory, honor, and praise. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Harmon. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving to public comments, Mr. DeBeauz. I'll hand it over to you.
Eight people have signed up, and the maximum is, that'd be about, what, four minutes per person? A little less than four minutes per person, thirty minutes divided by eight, three minutes and forty seconds, I'd say, per person.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can she, as the chair, allow five minutes per person?
The way the rules say, I think, the old rules, new rules are being in effect after tonight, but I think until we have third reading, they are, but...
Thank you.
We'll stick to the rules. So, four minutes and thirty seconds.
Well, no, three minutes and forty seconds.
Three minutes and forty seconds.
I think that's about right. Eight people, four times eight, thirty-two, yeah, comes out pretty close. Okay, the first person is Riggs Wilson.
Mr. Riggs. Mr. DeBeauz, can you give the speaker a warning when they have a minute left? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Riggs Wilson, and I have lived in the Canyons for almost three years. I have played baseball for the Kershaw County Rec Department for the past two spring seasons. I am now on a traveling baseball team that is coached by Shane Kirkley and Matt Nettles. When I played for the rec department, I was selected to represent Kershaw County on the All-Star team. Both years, the first year, the All-Star team played their tournament in Hartsfield, and their fields are so nice. Then last year, we played the All-Star Tournament in Mackey, and they also had nice fields. Now I'm on a traveling baseball team, and we play on fields in Lexington and other parts of Columbia, and they all have nice fields, too. Why can't Kershaw County host tournaments and have nice fields, nice facilities? When we have practices on the Kershaw County fields, our coaches always have to bring their own equipment from home to even get their, get the fields ready to practice. They also have to bring the pitching mound to even have everything we need out on the field. There was even one practice with an office chair in the middle of the field. I wish my Kershaw County teams, both recreation teams and travel baseball teams, could play in Kershaw County, and we didn't always have to travel to other fields. Can you please consider spending some money to have better fields and facilities in Kershaw County? Having respectable fields not only makes Kershaw County look good, but hosting tournaments like the ones I've attended the last two years can bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars per week and, and put money into the hard-working pockets of Kershaw County citizens. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs Wilson, and when we get to that...
Brant better watch out. I think he lives in Brant's district.
Um, when we, that is a goal for this council this year, and when we get to that planning, I'd like you to be a part of it. That would be very helpful, since you are the one playing the baseball on the fields, and it takes a lot of courage to speak in front of all these people, so thank you.
The next person that signed up is Bill Stewart.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Cassett, and I was reading something yesterday concerning Mr. Jones, Ms. Gwynne, about the Cassett Fire Station being, and I briefly, a couple of ideas, but I don't, I personally don't think one person ought to be able to hold off the building or the construction of this station, which has been underway for a couple of years now, or has been planned for a couple of years now, well, I think, four years. Ideas I had, if the individual that's wanting to move it, if he's willing to help pay the design costs and engineering costs to relocate, that's fine. I don't think we should have to pay any more money, as we're already, I believe, we're over budget on that station anyway, which, in four years, a number of things can happen. Or if he's willing to put up, like, a nice wall of trees in between himself and the station, I think it would be good. That station is a very needed item, and as we've moved toward staffed stations and such, the existing station on Red Hill Road doesn't have any room at all to expand and add overnight facilities for firefighters and, or even kitchen or restrooms, which they would need if they're doing twenty-four or forty-eight hour shifts at a station. This new station is very well-needed, and I think that we need to, and I'm glad to see Ms. Gwynne and Mr. Jones, I'm glad to see the two of you working together to see if we can come up with a resolution with it. But I just wanted to put my ideas in for something, and my objection to having it held up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
The next person that signed up is Joan McCully. McCully.
I know it's spelled like Joan, but it's Joanne. No, that's okay.
No, it is spelled like Joan. It's a Danish spelling, so you can blame my parents for that. I want to comment on the proposed resolution regarding support for parental rights in education and upbringing of children. I'm a former schoolteacher.
Joanne, can you speak a little closer, and you can move it, it's...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Is that better, Katie?
Down just a little bit. Okay.
Is that better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm a parent, a grandparent, I'm a former schoolteacher, and a former board member and former president of a board, so I have a little bit of, just a little bit of background related to education. So, my comments are, first, I'd like to understand, number one, the purpose or intent of the resolution? Two, why do you think it's necessary? Three, what are your expected outcomes if the resolution is passed? Four, what is the definition of human sexuality? What topics does this broad definition include? Second, how is this resolution in sync with the Kershaw County Council mission statement? Improving the quality of life for our citizens. It seems to me that this resolution is focused on only a portion of our citizens. Who decides what is appropriate? What is appropriate to you may not be consistent with my definition of appropriate. What about the children of parents who are not actively engaged in their children's education? Where and how do these children get credible information? Third, as the proposed resolution is specific to kindergarten through grade five, that is what I will reference further. And I will ask again, why is this resolution needed? Current South Carolina state law already specifies age-appropriate reproductive health education may be offered for grades K through five, and parents must be informed in advance of any sexuality-specific instruction and are allowed to remove their children from any part of the health education classes. South Carolina 59-32-10 further defines what reproductive health education is, which I won't elaborate on. South Carolina does not require or suggest a specific sex curriculum. Each local school is to develop their curriculum, and each school board must appoint a thirteen-member local advisory committee consisting of parents, clergy, health professionals, teachers, students, and persons not employed by the local school district. Do the Kershaw County local schools have such an advisory committee? There's much that is not included in the current South Carolin, South Carolina law. Perhaps quality of life in Kershaw County could be improved by suggesting changes to the current law and/or working with the local curriculum advisory committee. Fourth, regarding other governmental entities, is this resolution in conflict with providing desired information to all citizens? Allowing citizens a choice as to whether or not to utilize that information and/or resource. Is this resolution a violation of the First Amendment? A public library collection should represent a variety of viewpoints. Adult approval is already required for children under eighteen to acquire a library card. Removing material that might offend one person makes it unavailable for another, which is a form of censorship. Fifth, in this resolution, if hu, if human sexuality is intended to exclude the LBG, LGBTQ+ from sex education curriculum, are you aware that South Carolina Code 5-5932, which did exclude LGBTQ+, was declared unconstitutional by the U.S. District Court for South Carolina? Kershaw County Council has an obligation to all citizens, not just selected persons or those that share certain values and opinions. You all means all, A-L-L. My last point, I think that assuming parents have total control of their children's exposure to human sexuality and many other topics is not a reality. Would you prefer your child learn from friends, classmates on the playground, or from an educator? Knowing that it's taking place, you then can provide parental input. Otherwise, you may not even know the conversation took place. An objective of education is to teach students to think, analyze multiple viewpoints, so they can develop their own position. Let's not change, let's not change the purpose and objective of education by withholding information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mc, Ms. McCully. If you can come right back, your third question in the very beginning. If we go into discussion tonight, I want to make sure I ask it. So, the purpose or intent, why is it necessary, and then number three?
What are your expected outcomes if the resolution is passed?
Thank you.
You can have this, Katie, if you want.
No, I think I got them.
The fourth person that signed up is Tracy Paul.
Hello, members of the council.
Hi, Tracy.
Hi, I am Tracy Paul. I recognize several of you. I fed a couple of you, haven't killed you, fortunately. You rode with my daughter in a car, probably near-death experience.
Tracy, move the mic closer to your mouth.
But...
There you go.
I'm here today for Cassett. I would like to know why construction has been halted. I purchased property in Cassett twice now. Once, the first property I purchased in, let's see, 2019, I believe. No, 2020, I purchased the restaurant. I actually got it in 2017. Got it, there was no business, grew it, didn't decide if I wanted to stay there, and then I knew we'd get a fire station. That was a benefit to me. The construction that goes on there, the construction of the schools, everything that's going on that you guys have voted for, has helped me tremendously. The Cassett Fire Department, the Shepherd Fire Department, the Westville Fire Department, if you know these guys, they're wonderful people. I would do anything for them, and they would do anything for me. They would be the best neighbor that you could possibly have. If you have a house, I sold real estate for a long time, and whether you use an agent or not, you have a due diligence period in which you can just research everything around you. One of the things that you research is your neighbor. What will be there in the future? In the future, when you see Kershaw County in the middle of nowhere, you may want to wonder what it's going to be. If it is going to affect you, and you would not want that property, you can back out of it then, right then. I chose not to back out, because I know having them as a neighbor helps me in the community. They are so much closer. I have sat out in the middle of Highway One with a woman when she got hit on a golf cart, holding her head, so she wouldn't get up. It took them a while to get there, and the fire department was first. They always get there before the paramedics. They were what needed to protect me from getting run over. They had to protect her. I, at three, four o'clock in the morning, had a guy come over into the restaurant, ran his car through the, through the intersection. The fire department was there first. If they could be there at that intersection, that intersection is extremely busy, especially now with three schools going in that direction. We need that fire department there. They cover over a five-hundred-square-mile radius right now. The Cassett Fire Department has black mold in it. They cannot stay there overnight. They have to come from Shepherd or Westville to do anything in that part of the county. Houses burned. They burned completely. They cannot get to them. There is no one in Bethune at this point, not enough to do anything. So, we have to rely on them to come from way off to get there. Being right there on Highway One, they can access so many areas more quickly. I had a guy in the, in, fall at the restaurant. They were there first. I had a lady who had a stroke. They were there first. I had a man who had a heart attack in my restaurant. They were there first.
Ma'am, you have less than a minute left.
Thank you. My point is, when you buy a property, you have to look at it all around. We cannot stop the growth for many because of one, and I commend the homeowners that bought that house. It was on the market forever, for far less, far more, far everything. They are doing a wonderful job to improve Cassett. So, I feel like the fire department would improve Cassett as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Next person that signed up is Hattie Taylor.
Say your name again, Ms. Taylor?
It's Katie Taylor.
Katie Taylor? Okay, I can remember that.
So, I am also from Cassett. The Cassett Fire District is one of the largest fire districts for Kershaw County, and it's super frustrating for someone in Cassett that has been waiting for this station to be built to be halted by one person's personal feelings about seeing and hearing fire trucks. The Kershaw County taxpayers spent thousands of dollars for an engineer to do a site survey to figure out where the fire station would be located on that plot. The engineer chose the placement of the fire station, not done in angst or spite toward a neighbor, but chosen as the best location for the fire station. The neighbor bought their house in 2021, two years after Kershaw County had already purchased the land for Cassett Fire Station. And as Tracy said, the neighbor should have done their due diligence to find out who or what their neighbors would be prior to purchasing their home. Anyone in the county in 2021 could have told them Cassett Fire Station's coming. That's where it's going to be. They could have looked on GIS map and seen that Kershaw County had owned it since 2019. So, their lack of proper research into their own property should not cause the entire Cassett Fire District to suffer further delay in a new station. Furthermore, moving the station to a new location on that lot, or a different lot, would cost taxpayers thousands of dollars. The taxpayers would have to pay to hire the engineer to survey the land again, to clear more land, to bring in more dirt, and move the dirt that's already been put there in the proposed location. I hope that you consider telling the neighbor that the petition is not substantiated at all, and that you will not move Cassett Fire Station. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Next person that signed up is Donnie Cato.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Hey, Donnie.
Good to see you again. Good to see the council again. I've been here before, addressed the council before this one. And I'm very proud that we have a council member that is from the Timrod, Mount Pisgah area that sits on the council. That is something that's been needed for a long time, is representation for the northeastern part of Kershaw County, where I have lived for seventy-six years, except for a short period of time that I was in the military.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Now, my reason to be here tonight is to reiterate what two or three has already told you, that that Cassett Fire Station is a valuable asset to the northeastern part of Kershaw County. Most people don't even know where Timrod Community is at. Most of you probably know where Bethune's at, but you don't realize how much industry is in the agricultural section of that part of the county. There's millions and millions and millions and millions of... There's millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars been invested in the northeastern part of Kershaw County. And if you doubt that, there's a gentleman that just invested $150 million in Camden, South Carolina, to support the operations that a large number are located in the Timrod, Mount Pisgah, Buffalo, Bethune area, and that's Dr. Ron Prestige. I know you've heard that name. And the plan he just got through building and is debugging right now supports our farms. Our farms cost a million dollars to build. Now, I've had one of my houses catch on fire in the last five, six years, and guess where the rotator was at? That rotates from fire station to fire station. Where you think he was at? You don't have to answer that question because you know he was at the father's distance from Bethune area. Now, my understanding is the Cassett system is supposed to be manned 24/7, along with the EMS, possibly Station 5, moving the Cassett. Now, if that's the plan, that is a beautiful plan, in my opinion. Now, I don't understand this. When I went by there and they had told me that the project had been stopped, now, one horse don't stop no project. If those people had their proper permits to build what they were building, then they simply tell you to go see somebody else and leave me alone. Now, if you don't have the proper permitting, then you've got another problem to look at, and I hope the council will address that tonight. Do they have their proper permits to build that station there? And if so, leave them alone. Leave them alone. The other thing about northeastern part of Kershaw County, you look at the tax base that's up there. We pay a tremendous amount of taxes to Kershaw County. Those farm taxes, buildings that we all have on our farms, we pay Kershaw County a lot of money each year. We just got through paying Kershaw County a lot of money. And for one other thing I'd like to tell you.
Sir, you have about one more minute.
The CalMaine facility that's located up there is not just an egg-producing farm, that is the largest egg-producing farm in the United States of America. The largest, and they pay a considerable tax base also. Now, that fire station needs to be left alone, it needs to get in gear, and it needs to be built, and that's my opinion of it. And leave them people alone. Now, if you've got a permitting problem, then you need to address it, but you need to leave the contractor alone and let him build the fire station. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
The next person to sign up is Jeff Maddox.
Good to see you guys. There appears to be some controversy about the firehouse and all, and I think it really comes down to procedure. How much was the public involved in the decision in the placement of the firehouse on that piece of property? Were there any kind of plans shown as options or anything like that that could have made, maybe avoided this kind of controversy and all? I don't know. That's just something for you guys to think about in the future as we move along. You guys are going to decide whatever you're going to decide at that point. The second thing is on Russell's resolution. I've been told many times resolutions don't mean anything and all, like when council recommended shots and masks and all that. Some people voted for it just because it was a resolution, and it doesn't mean anything. So, you know, I understand this doesn't mean anything and all, but I think in the, in the community at large, there's all kinds of conversations about CRT and all this kind of stuff. I just want to make it clear, I'm an abolitionist. I do not believe that in a free society, the state should educate a free people. I don't think that happens. I think the progression, historical record will show that since the Prussian system was introduced in the United States, we've seen a rise of tyranny, of rights being destroyed, and decline in education. Eighth-grade test 100 years ago, I doubt many of the high school seniors could pass. Now, I have a hard time. That says a lot. The final thing I'd like to talk about is Santee Lynch's Council of Government is, in two minutes, holding a public hearing, public participation survey of our future. Right upstairs in Room 207, if anybody cared to figure out what these people are up to, that's the Super Walmart of government largettes, whether it be state or federal government. That's how it comes in and funnels into your local area. That's where it comes with hoops and strings and all kinds of beautiful things. So I'm going to be leaving you guys because I can watch this on YouTube and I can't up there. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jeff.
The next person that signed up is Jim Gaddy, I think. I have a hard time reading his name, is that correct?
Hello, council. Thank you for having me up here.
Hey, Jim.
I'm going to be short and sweet. I am the much-maligned homeowner next door to the...
Jim, put the microphone closer.
I am the much-maligned homeowner next to the proposed firehouse. I first want to say that my wife and I are not opposed to having the firehouse built on the property. We are just concerned that it is so close to our home, and I want to thank Katie and Jimmy Jones and Danny Templar for taking the concern of this whole issue. It has been built right on top of our house. So I, you know, alls we wanted was to maybe have it moved over a little bit, so it's not, it's a 24-hour facility, not so close to our home. It's disrupting our livelihood. We have to live there for the rest of our lives. We're planning on retiring there someday. So, you know, I know many people are saying that, you know, we don't want the firehouse. We do want the firehouse. I just wanted, just to stand up and say that. Our biggest concern was who made the decision to put it so close to our house? It's right on our property line. If it was placed another 100 yards over, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. We just want to make sure that there's a buffer between the noise and the, everything that's going to go on at this firehouse with the 24-hour facility. That's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to halt and stop the fire home, the firehouse. So that's all I wanted to say. Hopefully you're taking into consideration our concerns. You know, we're not trying to stop this whole thing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Madam Chairperson, one person signed up about 90 seconds late, Matthew Hutchinson.
Okay, I'll allow it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome. Hey, Matt.
I want to start out by saying, nobody has ever once said, "We don't want a fire station built in Cassett." Never. We do want a fire station built. We need a fire station built. The firefighters deserve a new fire station and a good place to rest, to run calls and sleep. I'm also a former firefighter, I'm an EMT. I responded to the call with the lady in Highway One. I was actually one of the first ones there on the ambulance that day. I transported him. We actually then flew one out on a helicopter. I fought fire with a couple of guys in the back of the room here. Will has taught a lot of my Fire Academy classes. I'm a fireman. I'm also a citizen of Cassett, a concerned citizen, and I like to help my neighbors out when they need it. Throughout the, in the three years that this 12 acres of property was built, the talk was always that the fire station was going to go next to the Dollar General. Now, I guess technically, it is next to the Dollar General. There just happens to be, what, eight acres in between it, with zero acres in between a household residence. My question is, where was the building in the original plans that went to DEHAC three years ago when the PERC test was requested? When were the plans finalized that put the station next to the house? Were there alternative plans presented? Who signed the approval? Who gave the green light to start this project and start cutting four acres worth of trees down? Was county council notified that this was starting? Who decided to cut down the four acres of trees and leave no green space? Who one county council has seen this with your own eyes? Would you approve of this fire station if it were next to your house? I highly doubt it. Now, the operations of a station, I'm sure you're going to have Chief Glover up here to answer these questions. Have him go through what the, what the operations are of a fire station from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 a.m. I'll tell you, they run every single piece of equipment in that station that has a motor on it. Would you want that next to your house? The only thing we're asking for here is options, for us to pause for a second, take a breath, let's see if there's a better option, something else we can do. Now, I hear that we've already spent $400,000 on the construction of this project, and everybody gets upset about that, that we're spending money, it's going to cost thousands of dollars. But y'all just applauded this young man who said we need more baseball fields in Kershaw County. Some of you were talking about building a $14 million baseball complex in the center of Camden just a few weeks ago. What are we doing here? Was the original plan of this fire station for it to be four bays three years ago, or was it going to be a small rural fire station that would fit next to the Dollar General? Then, when the money was found, $2.5 million, I think it was, did they decide, somebody decide to build a larger station? Now, with all that land that's there, you could have easily, nobody will ever convince me, you could have easily moved it over a few hundred yards, put it in the middle of the property, you would have plenty of space to build training grounds for the firemen, to train all day, and it's going to be a nice station. I guarantee you, they're going to be holding classes there for statewide classes. People will come from all over the state to have classes there, and that's great. I want to thank Jimmy Jones, Katie Gwynn, and Brant Tomlinson for answering my phone calls and addressing our concerns up in Cassett. I really appreciate that. Let's see if I have anything else. How much time do I have, Mr. DeBeau?
You have a little less than a minute.
Oh, okay. I want to finish up with the school stuff. Parents need to take more control of their parents and, or their kids in general. I advocate for homeschooling, get your kids out of the government schools, and I'll leave that at that, but all we're asking for is options, Ms. Chairman. Move it over a couple 100 yards, 100 yards, what can we turn the station a different direction, whatever, we just want, that's all we want, because we were kind of blindsided by this. I just drove down the road and I saw four acres of trees gone, and there were supposed to be green space left. Maybe the trees weren't pretty enough, I guess, and somebody decided to cut them down, it didn't fit into their drawing. I don't know. And then, if we do move it, what are we going to do with that land that's there now that is barren? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Matt.
That concludes the sign-up list.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeau. Thank you to everyone that signed up and spoke to council tonight. All right, we're moving on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adopt this agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tucker makes the motion in a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cato. Is there any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, and I'll call for the vote. Adoption of tonight's agenda, all in favor? Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, myself, Mr. Tucker, and opposed? Mr. Brazel? I didn't hear, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
He raised it.
Okay. Mr. Brazel, in favor?
I'm standing all the way on the end.
Okay, I'll start this way.
I'll start using my left hand.
All right, now we're moving into our public presentation for tonight's meeting, and Mr. Tomlinson, I'm going to give you the floor to introduce your guest and tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome Lowell Copert. Lowell is a good, good friend of mine, a veteran, an American. He was former Army, still active and works in some capacity. He's the chairman of the Aiken County Veterans Council. He's going to present, as you can see, those banners right there is something honoring the veterans that he started in Aiken County. I appreciate your time and thank you for being here, Lowell.
Thank you. So, I will try to keep this brief, it sounds like you guys have a lot of questions. Luckily for me, I get to talk about veterans, and everybody loves veterans, except probably our enemies. So what we have here is, as you said, I'm the chairman of the Aiken County Veterans Council. This is a project that we started in 2019 in Aiken that came from us, from some neighbors up north, and essentially, Aiken County is home to 18,000 veterans. We're a proud group of individuals. I know there are a number of veterans in front of me on the council, and there's obviously a number of veterans behind me, and Kershaw County is no different than in Aiken in that aspect. So this is a project that we started through our council, and if you guys look in those folders that I gave you, if you were to stand up a council, you could see my logo's on the front, my county council logo's on the front, that's something that your council could adopt, and that's what yours would look like on the inside if you were to go with something along our line, and we're working with the state to adopt that across the entire state, so all councils kind of fall under one umbrella and one branding. So getting back to us, this is something we started in 2019. These go up twice a year, they go up around Memorial Day, all the way through the summer, through the Fourth of July, and then they go back up again around Veterans Day. We already had a banner program in Aiken. It was a character banner program that was started by our late mayor, Fred Kavanaugh, and it lasted for probably 20 years, so we were able to, one, capitalize off of that because there were already brackets downtown, and I've been through Camden a number of times. I know some of the, some of the towns like Camden, can't speak of the others, have things that they put up, seasonal decorations and stuff like that to decorate the downtown, festive, that kind of stuff. So we capitalized off of those banner brackets that were already there, and this can be tailored. So if you already have something in place, I would recommend for the fiscal side of it, the responsible fiscal side of it, is that you work within the banner brackets that you already have, if you have something like this, and you can tailor your banners to that size. Ours are this size because that's what we were working with. These are ones out of Aiken. The North Augusta ones are similar in size, but they're just a little, they vary just a little, and you can only tell if they're side by side. What you have in front of you is, what I see on the front of this is two veterans, and you guys see different veterans on the back. On the front here, I'll just highlight a couple of these guys. So John Wilson is on the right, as the folks behind me can see. That picture that was submitted was actually the cover of Life magazine when he served in Vietnam. That's an actual Life magazine article, cover, magazine cover, and that was submitted to us as the council. All the information that you guys have on the left side of your folder is the, basically the workings of the banner and how, how it operates in Aiken County. So we have, the council has its own website, the Aiken County Veterans Council, we're a nonprofit established with the state of South Carolina in 1996. We've been operating since 1992. You could go on our website to the Hometown Heroes Banner Project, and you click on that, and it runs you through everything, submit all of your DD-214, which is where we verify that you actually did serve. And on that note, I'd like to show you Walter Chachowski. You guys see Richard Chachowski on the back, but his father is on the front, and that's not a typo. This gentleman served in World War II. Korea didn't fit, so we put Vietnam on there, but he served in all three. He also served in the United States Army, the United States Navy, and the United States Air Force, after retiring out of the Air Force of 33 years of service. Brant and I were kind of joking that, I see that now, and I'm like, hmm, stolen valor maybe, but that is real, and that's why we require a DD-214, to make sure that these are legit, and not just to prevent someone from putting something up there, but to protect these gentlemen and these women who have served our nation so that there's, their banner won't be tarnished by somebody else's that shouldn't be up there, calling theirs into question if, if somebody else's is called out. So that's one of the things that we do as far as the vetting portion of it. So you submit the DD-214, you can mail it in, you can do everything online, you can pay for it online. If you guys were to, you know, basically start your own without a council, and you guys did it through this council, the county council, I realize you guys have a website, people pay taxes there. We have a pay platform just like you do on our website, so this is something that this council could take on if you wanted to. We started it in 2019. Each side, we charge $85 per veteran to be on here. We pay $85 for the entire banner, so for every banner that we produce, we make $85. And since 2019, since we've been doing this, we've raised $15,000 that we can use for veteran projects in our community. The, speaking of the Chachowski banner on the back is Richard Chachowski. We, we refer to him as Dick Chachowski, he's a very active member of our community. The reason... The reason I wanna highlight this banner is, as I tell people who aren't from South Carolina, who don't have the good fortune of living in our state, our state is very unique in the fact that we have veterans that have served this country all the way back to the Revolutionary War. You know, we stand where freedom was won, as a friend of mine likes to remind everyone. And Kershaw is probably no different than Aiken County in the fact that there are a number of families that have a ton of veterans that have served. And so as you see here, you have father and son on a banner, and they've actually served together in Vietnam, so I have no doubt that that will be the same probably here. You'll have a mother and daughter, a son and daughter, or son and daughter, a father and daughter, that kinda thing, brothers, we have a number of banners in Aiken that are family members. I have a picture of our lieutenant governor standing downtown with me, she's a big supporter of the banners, and we just happened to take a picture in front of our police chief's father-in-law, who just happens to be on the banner that we stopped and got a photo with. So, it runs through the community, I know that Kershaw County is a proud veteran community just like Aiken is. You may not have the number of veterans that we do, but nonetheless, they're just as proud. And, so I thought I would bring this, I, I mentioned it to Councilman Tomlinson a while back, it's been something successful for us, it just, kinda going back to some of the stuff people were talking about behind me, but just the education thing, we also use this as an education project, not so much in the, in the aspect of it actually being a curriculum, but people get to see this. There's a lot of quiet folks, there's probably some people sitting behind me that served this great nation, and you all don't know that, and maybe some of the people sitting next to them don't even know that they've served. You know, Congressman Tomlinson knows I served, but I don't, I don't have a banner in my downtown, I just prefer not to have one, but there are some people that just quietly go on about their business, much like our World War II veterans, and this is a way for us to showcase essentially who your neighbors are and what they do, and, and, you know, the great, the great community you live in, and the folks that have helped make it a great community even though you don't know that. So, I appreciate your time and allowing me to come and speak before you, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I put a lot of information in there, there's a link on the bottom, that hyperlink, if you punch that in, that is our website, my card, business card's in there as well, it's got our email and our website on there, it's a very informative website, it'll answer a lot of your questions, but while I'm here, please feel free.
Mr. Copert, thank you for being here and thank you for your service.
Yes, me as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. Mr. Copert, it's, it's really nice to meet you. Were you special forces?
Yes, sir, I was.
I wasn't. You know, I was, I won't be on a banner, I was a clerk typist, but, but I was drafted, I did win the lottery, I was number 41. But I, I'm very, very proud to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman, what's your name? Brantley, he told me.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Tomlinson, he told me that, about this program, and, and I'll be honest with you, I said, okay, oh, another presentation, you know, I'm, I'm a veteran, but you hear a lot of presentations, this got me excited because, and I tell you why, we do have some hometown heroes here. Madam Chair, if I'm not out loud, could I ask all the veterans to stand up?
Yes, absolutely.
Even up here.
You already got, you already got enough to cover downtown.
Yeah, exactly. Your, your point was made right there, you're exactly right. Well, I just wanna say thank you, Councilman Tomlinson, and I want to thank you, Mr. Copert, for being here. I am very interested in moving forward with this and supporting your cause, and God bless you, my friend.
Thank you. I'd just like to share one last thing real quick, and then I'll let these folks get on with what they're here for. Going back to this, so we have in our downtown of downtown Aiken, we, Aiken is a, I think probably somewhat like Camden in the sense that it's a, it's a place where a lot of people come to retire, so we have a lot of assisted living communities, and we do some stuff with them as well. And one of these banners that stands out for me is, a lot of the, a lot of the veterans that are on these, it's their families that come to us to surprise the veteran, and they don't even know. So we do a lot of helping them go through the monotony of finding paperwork, sometimes that they can't find because maybe dad doesn't wanna give it up, kinda thing, so, but, one of the assisted living communities in our downtown, we actually did a presentation for a World War II veteran, whoo, man, it's hard to talk about. He was in a wheelchair, he's in there, and his family tells us like, hey, you know, we got this banner for him, blah, 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 it means a lot to him, well, he didn't know anything about it, and we were able to put it right in front of that assisted living community, and we got the newspaper involved, and we wheeled him out. And it was, it was, it was funny and it was very heartwarming because we're standing there talking to him, and he's talking to his son, and as they're talking, and we're just kinda standing there, he's kinda looking at us like, what are all of you doing here? And his son's like, oh, what's, what's that up on the pop there, or what's up on the pole there, pop? And he kinda looks up, and it's a picture of him in uniform from World War II. And just seeing the look on some of these people's faces and hearing the stories from the families has made it more than worthwhile, far, far more than any dollar amount that we could use as a fundraising project and all that kinda stuff, just the stories that we hear from the families has made it, you know, worthwhile in its sense, so, and I, I think that, you know, easily represented or replicated, if you will, in a place like Kershaw County. So, thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Copert, who did you partner with? Did you go to the county or the city?
Oh, so, what we do-
What was your process? You came up with this idea and then?
We just did it on our own.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, the, but with that being said, it's not gonna work without participation from the city, cuz they're like, you know, I'm pretty sure these guys in uniform here will probably pull you off a pole if you just start trying to hang your own banners. So, we, we have partnered with the cities over the years, and now it's gotten so, the partnership is so seamless that they actually store the banners, we've created bags that they stay in, and they put them up and take them down, we're out there with them just to say thank you when they do it, and we kind of even go as far the, we have a chair for each thing that we do throughout the year, and the chairperson that handles this, she goes out and she marks down like, you know, Jimmy Jones is on the corner of this street and this street, and then she sends emails out to all the, all the folks on file-
That's awesome.
-to let them know where their banner is, so it doesn't work without city participation, so, you know, we have public safety is what we refer to our law enforcement as, but the city workers and the public safety folks, they're, they're really the ones that, that make it happen, cuz they're the ones putting them up and taking them down.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I'd too like to say, I think it's amazing project. Certainly, probably the biggest reason that I'm here is because my grandfather's a veteran and my father's a veteran. My grandfather was a World War II veteran, landed five beaches, and just as a little kid sitting and listening to those stories, and, and they were interesting then, now they're amazing. So, I think this program's incredible, thank you for coming, look forward to helping and participating in it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. DeBose.
I would like to thank you for your service and for this project. My dad was a Vietnam veteran, Purple Heart recipient, my father, my grandfather was a World War II veteran, many family members and friends in my family are veterans, and I highly respect our veterans, and I really appreciate you doing this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Lowell, thank you so much for coming out presenting, this was absolutely incredible. You know, Kershaw County, we have a, a long history dating back to the Revolutionary War of people who have fought to be what we are today. I know we have over 6,000 veterans, it'd be an honor to be able to recognize twice a year and have the heroes to protect our freedom up on a pole. We'll work with the city. Lowell has graciously volunteered to come down and be a liaison in the process of setting up a Kershaw County Veterans Council, and going forward, this project would cost nothing, it would only be able to raise funds, so we could actually do more veteran projects. So thank you, Lowell, I really appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. Thank you for being willing to-
Yes, ma'am. We've got the playbook, we're more than happy to pass it off.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Approval of minutes, first, we will approve January 10th, 2023, this was a regularly scheduled county council meeting, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Brazel, second, Mr. Cato motions, any discussion on the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Tucker.
I was absent, I will be abstaining.
Mr. Tucker will abstain. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes for January 10th, indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Brazel, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato. Moving on to the special called meeting, January 12th, 2023, can I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Tomlinson, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Brazel, second. Any discussion on the special meeting minutes?
Once again, Madam Chair, I will be abstaining.
Mr. Tucker, abstaining. And we will vote, all those in favor to approve the special meeting minutes, Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, myself, and Mr. Brazel. All right, next agenda item is a resolution. Resolution by Kershaw County Council to express support for parental rights in the education and upbringing of children. This was placed on the agenda by Councilman Russell Brazel, and I will read it. A resolution by Kershaw County Council expressing support for parental rights in the education and upbringing of children. Whereas, Kershaw County Council believes that the public policy of Kershaw County Government, the public education system, and other governmental entities should be to support and protect the fundamental right of related to human sexuality. And whereas, Kershaw County Council believes that classroom discussion or instruction by school personnel or third parties on human sexuality is not appropriate in kindergarten through grade five, or in any other manner that is not age appropriate or developmentally appropriate for students regardless of age or grade. And, whereas, Kershaw County Council believes the public education system and governmental entities should not allow children to access discussion, instruction, or materials on human sexuality without expressed parental knowledge and consent. And, whereas, Kershaw County Council recommends the public education system and governmental entities that engage in discussion or instruction on human sexuality adopt policies and procedures that will assure children are not exposed to such discussion or instruction absent expressed parental knowledge and consent. And, whereas, Kershaw County Council recommends that the public education system and governmental entities adopt policies and procedures that will assure children are unable to access materials, whether physical or electronic, on human sexuality absent expressed parental knowledge and consent. And, whereas, Kershaw County Council believes the recommendations set forth herein are critical in assuring the fundamental rights of parents to control a child's exposure to discussion, instruction, and written materials related to human sexuality are not abridged or infringed upon. Now therefore be it resolved by Kershaw County Council that Kershaw County Council hereby expresses its strong support for the rights of parents in the education and upbringing of their children, and further recommends that and encourages the public education system and other governmental entities to adopt policies and procedures that will prevent children from access or exposure to discussion, instruction, or written materials related to human sexuality absent expressed parental knowledge and consent. The second page is the signature page. This was proposed by Councilman Brazel, and, Mr. Brazel, I will give you the floor to make a motion.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tomlinson, second. All right, leading into discussion, Mr. Brazel, if you'll lead our discussion and just let us know, or start off by letting us know the intent and the purpose of this resolution.
Absolutely. The intent is to, is to keep children children. So, it, it's been brought to my attention, and, and I think several other of our attention over the course of the last year, that in some of our public places such as libraries, books have been found that are targeting four to eight-year-olds regarding human sexuality. And basically, this is my response. This is my response that the parents should have the rights as to what their children can access. These books were found in the children's section. Tried to handle it quietly. I was told that, that everything was, was fine, and that's the way it should be. So, I feel strongly that children should be, should be kids, they should be worried about playing in the dirt, they should be worried about baseball, tricycles. It's, it's not the government's job to impress upon them their agenda. And, and this is a strong statement, and, and some may say, well, it does nothing. Well, it allows me to express how I feel in a resolution, as well as the cosigners, whoever would like to co-sign this. I feel like the government needs to stay out of parents' rights to raise their children the way they, they see fit, they shouldn't impose upon them their thoughts, and I think it's well-written, Mr. DeBose's son, John, helped me formulate this, and he did a fantastic job. I really appreciate everybody's support, whether you like it, you know, some that may not like it, that's, that's okay, but this is, this is something that was heavy on my heart and I needed to, to get it off my heart, so here we have it.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, ma'am, I got an email earlier this morning that, Mr. Khan, I was on the front page of the paper with my name on, on the resolution, and, and been fielding calls all day about it. Councilman Brazel, I think has spent a lot, a lot of time in this, and I've received, you know, support calls and, and calls against, you know, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I feel that, you know, your intent was not to put down our school district administrators or teachers with this resolution, correct?
I don't see how, I don't see how anyone could be offended if they would just want their children to be protected at such a sensitive age. And certainly not my intent to put anyone down, only to protect the children in, in their best interest.
Yep, and, and some of the calls I had today talked about, you know, what, what the school district does and, and, and does not do according to this, based on, upon the resolution, and, and, so I just wanted to, to kinda give my thoughts, since I got a little front time Chronicle paper, but thank you to Mr. Khan for, for making that right, he went above and beyond to, to correct the mistake, so thank you, and that's all I got.
Mr. Cato.
I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Brazel just said, this was not in any way directed on my part to any teacher or the school district in any way. I also believe that the parents should have the right as to how to bring up their children, and it shouldn't be shoved in their children's faces at such an early age. If their parents decide that they want to teach their children or have their children talk this material at that young of age, then so be it, but it should not be forced on any child. That's why I'm signing this resolution today. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
If I can, I'm just, with all due respect to my colleagues, I'm a little bit confused. Has anyone, Mr. Brazel, has anyone reached out? Did you talk to any members of the school district about this?
Talked to Mr. Billy Smith this morning.
This morning, okay. You know, we talk about parents having a right, the parents do have a right, our school district's doing a great job, and we talk about... Here's, here's where I'm confused, let, let me back up, I'm trying to get my thought process together. We talked, we said up here just now, a few minutes ago, that, that this is something about the library and maybe a book in the library that was there, is that what initiated this?
You know, I wrote the resolution, and, and I wanna leave the resolution as stated, I don't wanna get off into, into specifics.
So then the resolution does, the resolution is-
It says what it says.
So it's pointed at the school district?
No, sir, that's not what I said. I, I won't have anyone putting words in my mouth.
No, 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 please.
It's written the way it's written.
I don't need to put words-
And let's, let's not, let's not try to drag this into some, something that it's not.
Okay, well, so, so the resolution is for, is for, who is it directed to? I'm reading it that it's directed to our school district.
Ms. Gwynne, you'd be more than happy to reread it if Mr. Jones so desires.
No, I don't need it reread, but I appreciate that, listen, I think our school district's doing a great job, they don't force anything on the children, they're not being exposed to anything that the parents don't know about, and, you know, I know there was a situation a while back, that there was a conversation about a book at the library that was, that was in an area that children couldn't get a hold to it, and I- And I know Mrs. Gwen, Madam Chair, went to the library. She spoke with the librarian, and they moved it to the adult section. You know, I just, I don't know. I also talked to some of the school folks this morning, and they hadn't heard anything about this till this morning. And I think they reached out and called first to get a response back. I don't know what I'm voting for here. I can't support this because I wasn't called. It wasn't explained to me. And I'm reading something that after talking with our, some teachers, and after talking with some folks at the school, it appears that this is directed at the school, even though, maybe it's not. But it appears that it is, the way I read it. And therefore, I can't support it because I just don't think we have that problem here. I think our teachers, I think they're underpaid, they're overworked, they take care of our children. They're doing a fantastic job on it. And let me make one thing clear. I'm a Papa, and I'm a Dad. I have eight grandchildren, four children, and we all are. And I love my children. And I would trust my children being in Kershaw County School District any time of the day. And, you know, my wife is out there. God bless her. She's not on the school board anymore. She, we had some battles. But the thing of it is that I know firsthand by being involved with it there. I've seen the care and the love that they give them, and they will protect our children. And what worries me is that we pass this. It's emotional. I feel, and this is me talking, I feel like a shooting from the hip. Everyone's explained to me exactly who it's directed to. Well, the school system does feel like it's directed towards them if you read it. And I don't think, if Mr. Brazel says that, when he's ten, I believe him. He's an honorable person. I have much respect for him, but I don't agree with this. And I'll tell Mr. Cato, and Ms. Thompson, and Ms. Tucker, and Councilman Brazel, and Madam Chair, if I'm the one to vote no, I'm going to vote no. But that's why. This concept, we all want our children protected, but I think this is unnecessary. I don't think we have a problem. And thank you for your time, folks.
Mr. Jones, I may add that my wife taught for 15 years at Kershaw County Public Schools. I agree with all of your points, exactly.
And I think the absolute world of your beautiful wife and you.
I appreciate that. But this is, to clarify, not targeted. I talked to Billy this morning, he and I are friends, and we clarified that between us. I just, I don't want to go down some rabbit trail in public that's unnecessary. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker.
Madam Chair, thank you. I've sat here and I listened to the resolution as it was read and the discussion. And my problem with the resolution as a whole is that although it states exactly what Mr. Brazel feels personally, and he wants to express it, and I do respect that, we have other bodies of government that takes care of our libraries and the books and things, such as the librarian, Ms. Amy's here. I understand that they've moved the books from that location to a more responsible location. We have the library board. I'm not sure if this issue was taken to the library board or not, but that's an avenue that you could address. And of course, you got the state library board that gives guidelines to our local libraries. Along with that, you have the school board, which has been discussed. I was not elected to govern the educational part of our citizens and our children for Kershaw County. I am elected to govern Kershaw County. And for those reasons, I will not be supporting this resolution. I'm not into supporting feel-good resolutions and crossing or overreaching or overarching my authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Brazel, I would like to ask you the questions that a citizen brought up. I think we have the purpose or intent for the protection of children.
What is the expected outcome? Yes, I wrote that question down. The expected outcome is to hopefully get a hearty review of all things Kershaw County to make sure that the books that are being placed in our libraries, whether it be a school or a county library, are appropriate and age-appropriate.
Okay. And why is this necessary? Is there something specific that happened?
Yes, God laid it on my heart.
Okay. And can you define human sexuality that pertains to this, what you meant by that?
I think that's an unnecessary question. Human sexuality is something that could be discussed and debated for the next two or three hours, I suppose, in this day and time.
Resolutions, and Mr. DeBose, please correct me if I'm wrong, should be approval of an act. I do think it would have been more appropriate to do a proclamation, which any councilmen can do on their own. I would like to extend the question, not to Mr. Brazel, but to the entire council. Did anyone contact anyone in the public education field in Kershaw County to discuss this resolution?
I asked my wife about it.
Okay.
I did this morning. I did this morning because I didn't have any, I mean, nobody contacted me, I didn't have any questions. I mean, I had a lot of questions on it, and I was just trying to find out, do we have a problem? And of course, they were taken back by this, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And there we go again, making it something that it's not. Pushing the envelope to make something that really isn't into something that it, trying to push, put something into something that's not. I can't understand for the life of me why we're continuing to talk about it. If this was a resolution that someone else put up, we'd be done. It'd be over. We'd be marching down the street, and there'd be a round of applause.
We're still discussing it because I still have some questions. I think that the reason people think it's about the school is because the first line in every paragraph is "the public education system and governmental entities." It doesn't say anything about the library. It says "public education system."
That will be a governmental entity.
Amy is here. Amy, would you mind answering a question about material review? We also have some school leaders, school board members here, educators here. We have two charter schools in Kershaw County that I also contacted to just kind of weigh in on this problem. But as far as book circulation and material appropriateness, what is the process?
So I think that an important distinction to make is an understanding about the library collection in general. So Mr. Brazel's concern about the books that he saw...
It's not my concern. It's concern of my constituents.
I understand. I'm addressing specifically your concern in this situation.
Okay, Amy has the floor. Okay, so we're going to let her finish and then ask her questions afterwards.
So your concern and your constituents' concerns are valid. So that's not under contesting. The library collection, as part of our collection development policy, covers the entirety of the county. So part of our express proclamation with that policy is that we represent everyone in the community, which would include people who would find these books appropriate. And that also we include books that are controversial and may be opposed. The idea with that goes back to the First Amendment. It goes back to rights that we're protecting, which is that we have the openness to a variety of viewpoints and that even disagreeing with something is important and something that we should have access to. And that limiting that access is a form of censorship. Because public libraries are meant to give access to people who might not otherwise have access. So it's important to have a wide variety of materials. So people may not like everything that's there. That would be absolutely impossible. We do not seek out to express only one viewpoint. And there are a variety of parental styles. There are a variety of ways that people parent. And there are people that feel that these books would be appropriate. That's why they remained in the collection. But we did consider very carefully, with a very extended review process, what would be appropriate for those books, which is why two of them were changed from the general section where children were to other sections. There's also another policy, which is the circulation policy. And that dictates who can check out what and for how long. As it is now, the circulation policy includes two different types of cards. There's adults who can check out anything, and there are juvenile cards. And a juvenile card is for someone who is zero to 18. They have to require parental approval for those cards. My board is concerned about parents being involved in the choices and the decisions and the reading life of their child. There is nothing that the library wants more than parental involvement. And the 30 years of my career has been spent, by and large, trying to encourage parental involvement in the reading lives of their children. So with that in mind, we're considering other measures, like the possibility of parents saying, "We only want our children to check out juvenile material," as an example. Or letting parents know, who may not be aware of the contemporary issues that are pretty prominent, that there are material in the library that they might find objectionable and that they need to be actively involved in the reading selections of their children's. That's something that we encourage. That's something that we've always encouraged. And by and large, if you go to the library and you witness what happens, it's not children finding material that's objectionable to them and damaging to them. It's families who are deeply engaged in their children's education, trying to encourage them to read, who are finding books like Good Night Moon and Snowy Day and Where the Wild Things Are, and not books that are exceptional but cover issues that we are dealing with in society as a whole. Issues that people might find relevant, might be pertinent to their lives, might be something that they would want to seek out on their own, not for their children's sake, but to find out what publishers are publishing. The idea with a library is that you have access to all those forms of information and that you do not exclude that because we believe in the ability of people to make their own choices and their own decisions and decide their own values in relation to themselves and their children.
I agree wholeheartedly. Thank you so much. The problem is, is that the books in question, we're talking about human sexuality in a multitude of fashions. And the age group was four- to eight-year-olds. And they were in the children's section. And when I took the books, you weren't working at the library at the time. When I took the books and I went through due process, I wasted a lot of time because the response I got was laughable. So forgive me for bringing this to light, but it is the way I feel. I feel strongly about protecting children at that young of an age from the sort of material that I saw. And I just can't apologize for it. So as much as I appreciate the well-intended and very eloquent explanation, I still would just have to politely disagree.
And I understand that and respect that as well. I am sorry that you found the response laughable. I can assure you that we take the response of any reconsideration very seriously. The documentation that I have that met that response includes looking at a variety of reviews, looking at the circulation of those copies, looking at how other experts viewed those materials, looking at other libraries that held those materials, and consulting other staff members and seeking out lots of opinions. That was a big issue for my interim director, who does not have a library background to tackle. So you certainly put her to the test.
She did. She was very kind, and she did a great job.
She did a wonderful job. So I think what I'm interpreting when you say laughable might be, and I appreciate this response, that you weren't satisfied.
Absolutely not satisfied, correct.
And I understand that. This is an emotional, and I think also I would like to acknowledge that although we may disagree in how this outcome happened, we all care about children. No one will tell me that I don't care about children. I have devoted 30 years of my life to helping children. I know you care about children. I know everyone in this room does. So we all have the same mission. We may differ in how it plays out, but I acknowledge that this is a deeply emotional and important issue for you. And I can assure you that it was taken seriously. The next step in this, understanding that you feel like you wasted your time, but there is an important process with this. This is a policy that was approved by a board, which was elected by council, which is part of our legislation. So the next step in this process would be to appeal to the board. So you have not completed the process if you are not satisfied with this. If you feel as though that might be more waste of your time, I apologize and feel sorry for that. But I can assure you that my library board would take that very seriously.
Well, now, I would have to, I would have to say they were knowledgeable of the situation, were they not?
They were knowledgeable of the situation. The next step, if you're dissatisfied, and this is in the letter, I'm not saying you didn't read the letter, but in the letter, the next step in the process, which is also documented in the collection development policy, is that if you're dissatisfied with the steps taken by the library director, that you can appeal that to the library board. And that you would request to put on the agenda or schedule a meeting for the library board to address the issue specifically.
I very much appreciate that. Obviously, I had a different avenue, and this was it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Amy, what was the outcome of the board's decision for the reconsideration of the material? And how many books was it?
There were four books. And so two of the books were about, one was a book about consent, which was from my perspective, and I really, I don't think this would be necessarily an appropriate place to dig into the merits of these books. But one was a book about a child having respect and ownership of their bodies. The other one was a book about understanding differentiation in gender. Those were both picture books. So I want to explain also with picture books. Picture books, the primary objective with a picture book, which is used for many things, but what we hope is that that encourages children to love reading. It's a bonding time with parents. It's something I hope we've all experienced. It familiarizes children with reading and gets them ready to start school. That's its objective. But there are other times when children are dealing with difficult situations. Maybe it's grief. Maybe it is some sort of other difficult divorce might be another situation. If there's a situation where a child has a family member who is dealing with gender dysmorphia or someone in their class, a book can also be a tool for a parent to use to help negotiate and explain what might be a difficult conversation. So books are tools, and they're valuable in that right as well. There are some parents who may be going through situations like this or other situations where a picture book at that level would be helpful and appropriate. It may not feel that way for you. You might have a different reaction. But our consideration within the collection development policy would be, does this book have merit and is it appropriate and relevant for someone in the community? So that was the other book that was moved to the parenting collection because it was viewed as a book that would probably be better negotiated with the input of a parent. The other books are in the picture book collection, which is where parents go with their children. These are children who are not reading yet. So most of the interactions and the transactions that happen in selecting books are with children who do not read. So almost all of those books are already vetted and reviewed by parents, more so than in any other section of the library. So it's very rare for a child to go into that section without a parent. In fact, if you're under 12, you're not supposed to be in the library without a parent. That's really not because we're scared of books. It's more because we're scared of other people. But that's the policy. So children are with their parents in these situations. So the other two books that were in question, one was, it was a nonfiction book about a child who was transitioning to a different gender in high school who had caused controversy about use of restroom. So that was a nonfiction book that presented that story. And then the other one was a picture book also about pronouns. And that one was kept in the picture book collection. My point of view with those books and the danger they might possess in a public library is what I see practically speaking in those sections is that parents, when they're looking at picture books, when they're choosing those books at that age, they're already heavily involved in the process. And if a child came in and chose a book... And if a child came in and chose a book from that section without parental involvement, they probably are not at an age when they would be reading, so it would be unlikely that there would be much damage from that.
But it was a picture book. So if they weren't reading, they could look at the pictures, of course.
The pictures are children. The pictures are not sexualized.
At ages four to eight. I think we could probably talk about this all night, but this audience probably would like to see us move on. Thank you so much for the work that you do. You do a great job. We'll just have to agree to disagree. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Amy, I have one more question. Are these books available on the mobile book fair that visits the schools?
They might be, I don't know. That's, I don't handle that. So that would be a question for the schools, but usually that's handled through scholastic. So yeah, that would be a school district question.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tucker.
Ms. Amy, I just want to say thank you again for you and your board, because I know how, you're only thirty-five and you've been doing this for thirty years, so you're doing a very good job.
Those first few years were very difficult, yes.
But I know your history and I know how you have given and poured your heart out here at Kershaw County, as you have continued to develop your experience in education and being a good librarian. So I say to you, hats off, kudos, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions for Ms. Amy? Thank you, Amy, for being here. So I absolutely support parental rights in education. My hang-up is that we are not the school board. So I think this is appropriate discussion for a school board that's already a governing body to handle this. It's my understanding from talking to school board members and superintendents and heads of school that there's already policies in place to restrict access to this information. There's an entire state law on it, Section 59, 3250, Notice to Parents, Right to Have Child Exempt from Comprehensive Health Education Program Classes, which is where sexual education fall under. It mandates that the local school board and schools develop method of notifying parents. So to my knowledge, that is not an issue in Kershaw County, after speaking with the education leaders in our county. I do think the resolution caught people off guard. And if we are worried about the safety of our children, that's a huge concern, a concern of that magnitude, I think should first be a conversation with the school board and the educators in our community. A resolution without ever sitting down and talking to them about said problem, I don't know that's effective. I don't think it forges a good relationship with the public education system. So I will not be able to support the resolution tonight. Any other comments or discussion? All right, with that, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of approving, adopting a resolution by Kershaw County Council expressing support for parental rights in the education and upbringing of children, signify by raising your hand. Mr. Brazel? And all opposed? Mr. Tucker, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato. And thank you, gentlemen, for the discussion. Right, moving on to ordinances. This will be our third reading of an amended and restated ordinance by Kershaw County Council determining rules and order. This was placed on the agenda by Jimmy Jones. We do have a couple of amendments, and Mr. DeBeauz, can you hand out those copies for everyone, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think first order of business would be a motion to approve it, and then a motion to amend would come subsequently.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a third reading of the ordinance of the Kershaw County Council Rules and Order of Business.
All right, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tomlinson, second. Okay, and into discussion. Thank you, Mr. DeBeauz.
Well, I, there were some amendments that were introduced, I think about a couple of us. Mr. DeBeauz has a handout, if he would, hand those out. And what I would like, Mr. DeBeauz, is to go over where the amendments are done into the handout and where the tabs are, if you would, please.
Then you'll make a motion to amend.
Yes, sir, I will. But I want to get them the copies first, please.
Okay, so right now, we're in discussion for motion to approve.
And Mr. Tucker indicates that I'm going to hand out a copy of the ordinance, which has proposed amendments in it, and just for clarification, the council members, it's tabbed, and so we have yellow tabs on the three changes. And I'll tell you, the first change is just one word, which makes...
Mr. DeBeauz, let them follow you, if you don't mind passing them out, please.
I will. The second two we need to concentrate on.
Right. Okay, thank you. I want them to have the same eyes you and I have.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. DeBeauz, for a rules question, do we need to make a motion to amend the highlighted changes first? Can we discuss them without a motion on the floor?
I think probably if Mr. Tucker could make the motion to amend in accordance with the handout.
Yes, sir. I can, I can make the motion to amend, and my motion would be, make a motion to amend, reinstated by Kershaw County Determining Rules and Factors, the Millet's Ordinance, this will be in Section 3.1, be your first tab. The Millet's of Kershaw County, Millet shall be enacted no later than county council meeting at which the Kershaw County annual budget is enacted. Okay, and if you would go to Section 4.2, which will be your next tab. Chairperson shall, and when required, execute on behalf of Kershaw County, of the county council, all ordinance resolutions, directives, bonds, and other official instruments or documents as required by council. As to an honorary proclamation or resolution, as to an event, organization, or persons, or statements of expression that is sponsored by council, may be indicated supported by executing other, and other council members may execute, indicating the council member's Move over to Section 5.1, which says, the committees of council. And go down to, which says, Section, it's Section B, number eight, that's being striking out, as you can see, all affairs to be, the financial affairs of the county, and industrial incentives, that has been striking from the second reading. And if you go down to number eight and nine, I mean, not nine, and ten, let's do nine first, you have highlighted, let's read that paragraph. After the proposed annual budget has been recommended by Finance Committee and placed onto the agenda for a second reading, or in the event no timely recommendation, the budget is then subject to proposal amendments, including the amount and purpose of the expenditures and source of funding, by motions of county council members as provided for Section 3.1B or administrative proposals. And I'm happy to go into further detail, a lot of this, what most of this was about was not having the Finance Committee hold county council hostage because they don't enact or do what they're supposed to do.
All right, is there a second on the amendment?
Hold on, one more.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, one more, that's okay. All right, go down to ten, if you remember, in item ten, we had twenty-one days for that committee to respond back to that council member. That's a long time. We'd like to reduce that down to fourteen days. That's adequate time for that committee to respond back to a council member where that council member is not being strung out or on a delay tactic. So this is just to keep everybody in check and in accordance with what we're trying to achieve here. I do have one more on page one, that Madam Chair asked me to look into, and I did. The, if you go back to page one on the agenda, it would be Article Two, where we have our times. You guys proposed moving the date from Wednesday to Thursday, and it passed first and second reading. The question came up about having it at 4:00 PM on Thursday for the deadline. You're really only allowing the clerk to counsel one day to prepare this agenda, and I don't think that's fair to our clerk, our sitting clerk, or our clerk to be in the future. He or she needs a little bit more time. So I'm asking that we also place in there a 1:00 PM cutoff time on that, and the media, when I spoke with them, is still okay with the 4:00 PM on Friday. So that actually gives the clerk a day and a half to prep the agenda, to get it also perused by our chair.
Mr. Tucker, just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
So adding an amendment to Section 2.2 to change the second 4:00 PM to 1:00 PM on Thursday?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the Thursday, 1:00 PM.
Is there a second on the additional amendment and the four presented prior?
I'll second.
Mr. Tomlinson, second. Now, Mr. Tucker, I'm going to give you the floor back to go into discussion on the changes and...
Okay. Of course, I was, thank you, Mr. Brantley, I was telling you about why the 1:00 PM instead of the 4:00 PM, so is there any questions on that, that we have? If you flip back over to your first tab, which will be Section, it'll be Article Four, go down to where it says chairperson, is there any questions on why we added the honorary proclamations and resolutions?
I think this is a great addition, and Mr. Brazel brought this to our attention. So in his resolution, he wanted to be added to the signature page, and that's not something that we ever did before. So I got with Mr. DeBeauz, and adding this allows any council member to, if there's a passing resolution or proclamation, to add their name to indicate support. So I think that's a great addition.
Okay, flip over to your third tab.
Mr. Jones, do you have something?
Yeah, I do have some comments, but I want to...
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It sounds like you're reading a book over there.
I'm sorry.
This is, excuse me, I'm going to be polite, let me say this. This is exactly, with all due respect, this is exactly why I wanted these rules implemented, because here it is, third reading, and I'm just now hearing about that.
Yes, Mr. Jones, and I do hear you, but also why third reading is so important is for a guy like me. I had a family emergency that took place the first meeting of January, and I was not able to be here, nor on the phone.
Mr. Tucker, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We all find the time to do the things we want to do, but let me just say this, and I respect your time, but let me say this, let me finish, and I mean this with all due respect. I will support this tonight because it doesn't deal with any money.
Well, I greatly appreciate it, but I still want to explain myself. So of course, the chair called a call meeting. I work a full-time job. I cannot change my schedule like that, that rapidly, and I explained that to her that I will not be able to make it. And so with those two issues, I had no opportunity to participate in the process because I wasn't present. And so this is where we are now, and I, you know, I worry about committees holding this council hostage and not performing their job, as well as council not doing what we all were elected to do, which is govern. Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Do you know how many special call meetings I was not notified on?
You retired, Mr. Jones.
No, for the last eight years.
You retired, Mr. Jones, for the last twenty.
Anyway. I keep my wife, I keep my wife working full-time.
Okay.
No, I don't keep her doing anything. I take that back. No, seriously, guys, seriously, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Tucker, but, you know, I don't, I do think the four o'clock time, that's something that the Madam Chair, we had talked about, and I think it's a good time, but I can go along with that. You know, we've had it in the past, and it worked. It really did, it worked, I can support that. But are you going to continue to read on? Is there more?
Well, I'm just going to go to the last tab, just to make sure there's no questions, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So of course, we've discussed, if you move over to page five, which is the last tab, all matters of financial affairs of the county striking through, with industrial incentives striking through.
Where are you at, sir?
Page five, number eight, paragraph eight.
I got it.
Okay. That was striking through, removed, and then in paragraph nine, added was the event of no timely recommendations. This is where, for some reason, the Finance Committee falls short on their duties, council still has the authority to move forward.
I like that.
I like that, too. So we're just adding that if, you know, the above sentence, I think it says the must, the Finance Committee must...
Right.
...do something, well, in the event that they don't, in a timely manner, any council member can put that on the agenda item. I think that's a good, that doesn't tie councils' hands.
Right.
We don't want the Finance Committee holding up this body. I do like the strike in number eight because I felt like industrial incentives gets into economic developments realm, and I think it's just a good clarification.
So number ten, we just reduced the days from twenty-one, as I stated earlier, down to fourteen, so therefore that it's a more timely response from the committee back to the council members. I just don't think you need to drag them out. That is all the amendments, sir, and madam, and I appreciate everyone's support if they can support this this evening.
All right, any other discussion? These are all technical clarifications, not changing the intent of the document or anything that was added. Mr. Jones, thank you so much for working so hard on this, and Mr. DeBeauz as well. It was a group effort.
Madam Chair, if I may, let me do my due diligence there, too. I thank all of you for the first and second reading, Mr. Jones and Mr. DeBeauz for spearheading this. Great document, and I thought that everyone had good valid points, and it's nothing that I'm trying to change the document, I was just, you know, trying to, with the Madam Chair, clean up a few things that I saw that could be potential problems.
If I may.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just say something about these rules of order. Madam Chair says we're going to follow these rules. If we're not going to follow them, we're not going to have them. And these rules will keep us transparent, they will keep us accountable, we won't be ambushed, won't be kept in the dark, and I thank everyone for their cooperation on this, and I think this is a great piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the amended and restated ordinance by Kershaw County Council Determining Rules and Order of Business, indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Tucker, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato, and all opposed. Mr. Brazel? And the ordinance passes.
And I think that was the amendment, wasn't it? You were voting on the amendment to the ordinance.
Voting on the amendment.
That was the amendment, yes, now we have to pass the amended ordinance.
Ordinance has amended.
Right. So we got to vote on the amended ordinance, because that was the amendment we just passed.
Okay.
So call for the vote.
So call for a vote for the amended and restated ordinance by Kershaw County Council Determining Rules and Order of Business as amended.
Correct.
All in favor? Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, and myself, and Mr. Tucker, and opposed? Mr. Brazel? Now the ordinance passes. So this, these are our new rules, and, Mr. DeBeauz, when do they go into effect?
I think they're in effect now.
Thank you. Folks, I have worked sixteen years to see this council come transparent, and tonight, this has done it. So I feel like if I leave tomorrow, something has been accomplished. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of county council.
You're welcome. All right, going into new business, the first item for new business, this is discussion only, and it's regarding... All right, going into new business, the first item for new business, this is discussion only, and it's regarding planning and zoning. Mr. Jones, you put this on the agenda, so I'm gonna give the floor to you. Discussion only, we will not be taking a vote.
Thank you, and we, we can keep this brief. You know, um, staff came up to me and said, listen, uh, folks wanna know, what do you need for tonight? They'll be glad to get you whatever you need, dah, 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 dah. I said, I don't need anything. I'm gonna ambush them. But I was just joking. I'm not gonna do that. I wanna have a good, honest discussion. Here, here are my concerns. Mr. Templar, we deal every day, you and I think we talk every day, every other day about planning and zoning. We, it's either the attitude towards the public, it's either the... Attitude when a contractor comes in, I, I get complaint after complaint after complaint, and I'm getting tired of it. And what I want to know is, and I know we're working on a comprehensive plan, and let me say this, too. I also know that the hands of our folks in that office are also tied in a lot of ways. But what I am not gonna stand for is, I'm not gonna be rude to you, and I'm not gonna allow anyone to disrespect or be rude to me as well, too. And, and that has happened, and that's not gonna happen again. At least, I'm not gonna allow it. But, uh, I know that Councilman Brazel has worked. I've worked with him, he's worked with me, he's received calls. I, I think Mr. Tomlinson's probably received some. But I, I can tell you, there's, there's, something's broken somewhere. When I have contractors day after day after day, or I have citizens, I'll give you an example. One citizen called up and he said, um, well, I, I put my new garage on, but I, I was, I was threatened to get ticketed or whatever written up because I had moved an eight-by-ten store shed 10 feet or eight feet on my property. You know, and, and when you've got, when you've got business folks in, in, in the community that their, their headquarters calls them up and says, "We've got a, we've got a gift for you." A gift is a free sign. Well, that $3,000, three signs just turned out to be $10,000 for the business owner because, under the new order sign, orders, they can't have the same size sign. But I believe Mr. Templar, you and, and, uh, Mr. Carpenter took care of that, that y'all were able to help take care of it. I tell you another business that this gentleman opened up in, uh, on Highway One. He, he was told that he had to move a pole that was providing his utilities 10 feet. With that 10 feet moving the pole would have cost him $3,000. He said, "Mr. Jones, that'll be $300,000. I've just used my life savings to open up this business." And they're telling me either that, or I don't open my doors. Well, you know, administration got involved and they made it happen. I'm just saying, look, we're, we're going through the comprehensive plan. I want to have a little bit more compassion when it comes to the folks that are coming in there utilizing our office. You know, I think we all can learn from Chick-fil-A. I can be having the worst day of my life, the worst day of my life, and walk in Chick-fil-A, and I'll tell you what, you, you're just... You know, make you feel 100% better because the people in there are just so polite, and I'm sure those kids are tired. I'm sure they're worn out. I'm sure they're making pennies. You know, relates to a government job. But bottom line is, and, and, and I'll say this, too, Mr. Templar, your motto is, "How can I help you?" And I love that motto. So I hope that some of my colleagues will have something to say, because I know some of my colleagues have had issues and problems. But, uh, these have gotta be worked out, and I think the comprehensive plan is certainly one way to do it. But I want to instill on, on our staff, your staff, sir, and, and I will hold you accountable, Mr. Templar, your staff to be polite in every office to the citizens of Kershaw County. You know, I have people calling me up, not much, once in a while, that are really outraged, but I listen to them. I don't bless them out and hang up on them. Well, maybe not yet, but, uh, I'm just saying, we, somewhere, somehow, we, we, we've, we've got to realize that these folks out here, whether I agree with them, or they agree with me, or we disagree, I work for them. I don't work for these politicians up here or the bureaucrats. I work for these people out there. And, uh, so that's really why I put this on, and I'll, I'll yield, and hopefully some of my colleagues will also speak that I know have had some issues.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? Mr. Templar, who does Angela work for in planning and zoning?
Excuse me?
Who is Angela? Can we clarify?
Okay, so I've fielded some complaints about someone named Angela, so I don't even know her last name. So if you will, um, let us know where she is in the process of planning and zoning.
Yes, so she is a contracted engineer for us that helps us handle our MS4, which is our stormwater. That's both inside the, what, what the state determines is our MS4 district, and she also helps us handle our stormwater outside of that district, which is, you know, Cassid area, the greater area. So, um, just imagine MS4 running most of Lugoff. And that's just our, our obligation through DEHEC and the EPA to capture stormwater and handle stormwater appropriately. So with the, um, our last engineer, Russ Van Patton, leaving, he was the person over the MS4. Our next engineer was a little more sewer-centric, if you will. He was, his, his specialty as a stamped engineer was to handle our, our wastewater facility. So we didn't have, uh, the ability for him to handle MS4, so we contracted out. And that, that's been some time back. Same with roads as well. We have Michael Baker for road construction. They work with, uh, CTC for resurfacing and, and building of roads. And Angela works for Wood PLC, who is a contractor as well. So the goal, um, is to just make sure we're in compliance with rules that are beyond Kershaw County's ordinances and regulations. These are DEHEC rules, these are EPA rules, these are, these are essentially federal mandates when it comes down to stormwater.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And does she have any kind of authority with the citizens? Should the citizens be contacting her? What, can you explain how she's contacted and how she's brought into the loop?
So she's, it's, it's as needed, so with larger projects, um, anything but a detention pond or retention pond or a construction site, especially in an MS4 district, that is just a very regulated process there. So if a silt fence is down and there are, you know, rainwater runoff from a construction site that's pouring silt into a creek, that's, that's problematic. So she, she is there to, to help mitigate that and make corrections and do inspections, so...
Okay.
Is MS4, is Cassid MS4?
No, no. MS4 stops, um, just imagine through Lugoff and then some into the city of Camden, so it...
So she wouldn't have any jurisdiction in Cassid area?
No, that's gonna be, um, that is the, uh, DEHEC's jurisdiction and federal regulations, DEHEC.
Oh, good, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Mr. Templar. So I think what I would like to see with some of the complaints I got, I certainly acknowledge Angela's expertise and our consultants' expertise. We need them. They're the subject matter expert. But I don't ever wanna pawn anything off on them. I want our people to take care of our citizens and help them get to whatever they're trying to do. Help them get to their goal. And I know that's hard sometimes with the strict regulations, and we hate to say no, and sometimes we have to. But my expectation is that with her help, we try to get to an agreeable answer or a yes, instead of always saying no.
Right, and that is mine as well. We currently have a vacancy for an engineer. I'm in the process of interviewing stamped engineers, professional engineers. And this time around, we're looking to go a little more stormwater, road-centric. So we can, uh, I, I feel like the current wastewater facility is, is run very well. And we can contract out perhaps on that side as needed. But to your point, bring more of a local approach into our local building and these local issues.
Okay. Thank you. The only other thing, for discussion reasons, planning and zoning, we have the comprehensive plan. Mr. Templar, when do you expect to, that contractor to contact us or start having meetings?
So we're, we're trying to, um, look at events coming up in the community that would take away public input. So things like the Cup, things like that. So we don't wanna plan around that when we don't have the captive audience that we're looking for. Because that's gonna be a real opportunity for us to adjust, to address some of the concerns that Mr. Jones had. And I can think of a half a dozen rules and regulations that I think should be relaxed. I can think of two or three more that should be maybe buckled down on, perhaps. But, uh, so that's gonna be a real opportunity, and, and this is a 10-year process. And I don't wanna waste this opportunity with, with a lack of participation. So we are working with them now to, um, schedule the most opportune time for council engagement, citizen engagement. I would like to have contractor engagement and, and just take advantage of what I would consider wet cement and, and where we can really shape what we want in, in the future. And also, the Planning Commission will be involved in that as well. So it, it will be a robust process with lots of input.
Okay. And how long do you think it will take?
I don't have a timeline on that. I think what's gonna be the driver there is, um, the, these public engagements. Alceal Levine is the contracted organization. They will come down and spend four days down here. And I think that is, is, um, once we kind of pass that milestone, things should pick up. And with that, I will, I will get an expected date, you know, a timeframe for y'all.
So, Mr. Jones, I think we have an opportunity to change some of the concerns that citizens have through the comprehensive plan process.
Exactly, and, Mr. Templar, I appreciate it.
And, Mr. Jones, to your concerns about, um, our public interactions, I take that very seriously.
I know you do.
I do not stand for any kind of rudeness or anything like that. So I, I, you know, I will work to make sure that that doesn't happen, again, going back to my plus one. And my, my goal for this organization to be a true service provider, that is not consistent with what my goals and expectations are. So I will absolutely look into it.
Well, it didn't start under your watch. Say that, thank you. But I meant every word I said. We work for these folks out here. They're our bosses. We walk into an office in this building, I expect every employee to treat them with the utmost of respect.
Agreed.
Thank you, and I know you do. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Cato.
I'll just reiterate what Mr. Jones said. I think we probably received the same phone calls, but I was very disappointed. In just my short tenure, I've had two or three complaints on the planning, zoning. And it's, it's very disappointing, but I, I feel sure you'll get it straight for us, Mr. Templar.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cato. We're speaking up. Appreciate it.
With that, we will move on to our next item of business, which is the appointment of an interim clerk to council. Do I have a motion to appoint an interim clerk to council?
I would like to make a motion to have Lauren Reader as the interim clerk to county council until the vacancy is filled by this county council.
Okay, a motion to appoint Ms. Lauren Reader until the vacancy is filled. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
Yes, will you accept? Thank you.
Ms. Reader, thank you so much for filling in the gap. We do, this body does have to officially appoint an interim in the absence of one. So this was a technicality, but I do think that she is the best woman for the job. And if there's no more discussion, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor in appointing Ms. Lauren Reader as interim clerk until the vacancy is filled? Indicate by raising your hand, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Tucker, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato. Congratulations, Ms. Reader. All right, moving on, establishment of the finance committee. We are, under our new rules, our new rules state that we will establish a finance committee, so we will do so at this time. Are there any motions to put a member on the finance committee at this time?
Do we wanna do it by motion or by nomination?
Do you wanna nominate all three, or...
Well, I don't wanna take somebody else, but I'd like to make the motion for Russell Brazel to serve on the finance committee.
Okay. Motion for Russell Brazel to serve on the finance committee. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Tomlinson, second. Any discussion?
I think he's a good man for the job. I think he is, his heart is in the right places, his work ethic is there, and, uh, he understands business, so...
Mr. Brazel, would you like to serve on the finance committee?
I don't think I would.
Then I rescind my, I, I, I'll take it.
I think I'm gonna pass.
Then do we wanna do this by nomination?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that's second and we're discussing, so you can withdraw, well, he didn't make the motion. You can withdraw?
I'll withdraw my motion.
There we go.
And I'm glad, and I'm glad to withdraw that if he doesn't wanna serve. As he told me, he wanted to serve earlier.
Any other motions to put, Mr. Tucker?
I have a question on, um, do we, do we wanna do motions? If you do it by a slate, you can ask who wants to be on, and then you can do one motion, which would be a lot simpler than going down. If not, I'm happy to make a motion to ask Mr. Brantley Thompson to serve.
I don't mind doing a slate, so...
I'll second that.
All right, so I would like to add Mr. Brantley Thompson to serve on the finance committee.
Okay, nomination, Mr. Tomlinson, do you accept that nomination?
Thank you, Councilman Tucker, and yes, I accept the nomination.
Is that a motion or nomination?
That was a nomination.
Why did you do that?
We're nominating a slate, and then we'll make a motion to approve the entire committee.
And I would like to make a motion to nominate, uh, Councilman Tucker for the finance committee coming up. Uh, Councilman Tucker, you know, knows the budget process by the back of his hand. How long have you been doing this now? I mean, you've got a few gray hairs on top of your head, but, uh...
There's a lot more than you think.
I think it'd be good, uh, good guidance, um, for someone who's, who's been through many budget cycles to, uh, give new people like me guidance on the process. I'd like to nominate Councilman Tucker.
I duly accept, and thank you, Councilman Thompson.
Okay, and any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Danny Cato, if he's willing to serve.
I'll second.
I would, I would respectfully pass, and I, and I wanna, I wanna explain my reason why. Uh, I feel like I need time to get my feet wet a little bit with the county business. And I, I feel like I would need a little bit more time to make sure I would be comfortable and do, do the county justice. So I, I, at this time, I respectfully pass, but thank you for your consideration, Councilman Tucker.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr....
And leave many people, Paul Napper, would you serve on our finance committee, please? He's out there in the...
I have a question before I make my next nomination, because I know this individual's desire. So my question to you, Mr. Beaus, if we appoint someone now, um, can we change later if someone's serving temporarily?
I think you appointed him for two-year terms, but the person you appoint could resign.
Okay, and then we have to reappoint?
Yes.
Okay, and that's my question. I nominate, uh, for slate, Mr. Jimmy Jones, Vice Chair.
And Mr. Jones.
Crap.
No, yes, that's crap.
I was the chairman of the finance committee for three years. You and I fight like cats and dogs in there.
Correct.
You're a liberal. We don't think alike. I'm gonna stand my ground, and you're gonna stand yours. I will do it, but I'm gonna resign. I would do it under this condition, because I'm not gonna, I am not gonna leave this county without a finance committee. Because that finance committee will hold accountability. We won't get blindsided with budgets, as we have been in the past. So I will serve on the finance committee until we determine, we see who just won the election today, and they, hopefully, they will take my place and I'll resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
If they don't, I will continue, but, uh, pray.
Madam Chair, I, I make a motion that the nomination comes to a close.
Okay, nominations are closed. We have three members nominated and accepted. Is there a...
I make my motion that we accept the three members that have been nominated, um, for the finance committee. Mr. Brantley Thompson, Mr. Jimmy Jones, and Mr. Sammy Tucker.
I second that motion. All in favor of the finance committee slate, Councilman Tucker, Councilman Tomlinson, and Councilman Jones? Indicate by raising your hand. Mr. Brazel, Mr. Tucker, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato.
May I have a, a, just a quick moment of point of order?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Not a point of order, but just a moment to say something. This finance committee is very, very important to this county council. It is more important than vice chair. It's more important than a lot of things, because you're gonna take up your time, and you're gonna sit down, and you're gonna go over, and all we do is make a recommendation to the county council. And all we do is make a recommendation to the county council. So that, that's what we do, but it's a lot of work. It's a lot of involvement. And I take it very, very seriously. I've been here 16 years. I'm going into my fifth term. And, you know, I hope this council can work together through this. I'm sure we can. But I appreciate everybody who's accepted to serve on it and let's buckle down and do what's right and have a balanced budget with no taxes, no increases, no fees this year. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. As part of this new business topic, in accordance with our rule section 5.1, number two, the chairperson of the, the chairperson of the finance committee shall be appointed by the chairperson of county council. So with the members serving.
First, I want to tell you, I will not chair, I am not going to chair the finance committee.
I was not going to select you. I think experience in this position is probably the biggest concern of mine. We are a new council. We're going to have a new clerk. And Danny, you're very knowledgeable, but also new at the administrator job. So I'm going to lean on the experience in this council. And at this time, I will appoint Councilman Sammy Tucker as the chair of the finance committee.
Yikes. But thank you, Madam Chair, and, and my colleagues for entrusting me. And I assure you that this committee will work hard, do the due diligence, make our meetings, and bring back the reports and the things that are needed for us to have a sound budget and present back to council for approval or amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
You're welcome.
With that, our next agenda item is funding authorization for Kershaw County opioid settlement fund. This was placed on the agenda by myself and in your packet, you should have a sample letter that goes with this motion, the technical requirements of approving a subdivision and the written authorization that.
Just, Ms., Madam Chair, may I, may I recuse myself from this discussion and recuse myself from this vote because the person you're going to be calling up is my, my beautiful bride who fell in love with me when she first saw me.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
And I'm going to go to the back room.
That's appropriate.
Somebody come get me when it's over.
We may.
You will also have a opioid fund technical proposal. And at this time, I move that county council authorize the chair to execute this letter to the opioid recovery fund board granting approval for the Alpha Center to apply for guaranteed political subdivision sub-funds in the amount of up to $561,228.03 on behalf of Kershaw County pursuant to the technical proposal requirements published by the opioid recovery fund board. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. If, if, would you like to lead?
No, I'll, I'll follow.
Part of the reason, and the director of the Alpha Center is here, Ms. Mara Jones. She was very helpful in our first application for funds. Unfortunately, our application did not get approved and that's because we are not the subject matter experts. No one sitting on this board or in Kershaw County Government Center is a subject matter expert in this field. We need to rely strongly on the Alpha Center as a partner. If the Alpha Center pools this funding for their very specific and certain programs, they are also held accountable to report back to the opioid fund committee with reports of how they are spending the money and if they are spending it appropriately according to their application. So it does put the responsibility on the applicant and the person using the funds. Our, our technical requirements is that we give the, we give the participating subdivision written authorization by the governing body. So we're the governing body and we would be granting explicit approval for the Alpha Center to pool the funds necessary for any opioid core strategies and uses.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I, I got a couple of questions that I would like to hear from Ms. Jones. And a couple of questions is, one is, we're drawing down on the 561-228. This program goes on for 11 years. So we're holding back, and this is for you too, Mr. Temple, on the others and for the next couple of years to see what progress we've made through the Alpha Center to draw down again and I'll give that chance to build back up, which kind of makes sense. Ms. Jones, I've been through this before on a huge grant. Unfortunately, that was a life taken in order to achieve that grant, but it was well spent in our community and I thank you for that. And you were on top of that grant and you weren't the director at that time, but you did such a lovely job, you and the Alpha Center. So we appreciate that. And so all my trust is within you and your staff and I know you're capable, able. And what I would like to say too, in our written agreement, that we have a periodic, whether it's annual or semi-annual, of updating council where we're at. And I know you're very good about doing that. I don't think we need to see you every month, which I love looking at you. And you can tell your husband that. I'll tell him when he comes back. But that would keep us abreast on the progress and of course, you know, let us know what you need in addition to trying to combat the opioid, the fentanyl, all the stuff we have that is feasting on our young, middle-aged, old people. It is running rampant in our community. So with that, I'll be quiet and I'll hear from you if that's okay.
The, can each one of y'all hear me?
No.
The proposal, and we've done this also with the Health District, that authority is given to us through a letter of approval. The strategies that are in the technical proposal requirements are all familiar to the Alpha Center because we're required to abide by those proposals already and record, record every month how many I actually deliver. What this would actually do is the proposal that I work with, Danny and Gerald with, is kind of similar to what we did with the, with the gang grant that we did with the school district, which ended up being a successful gang grant program. So the council may or may not know this, but we had in the month of, in November, we had almost, well, we had 19 overdoses on two streets with four deaths. And that to me said there was, there needed to be a call to attention by our community. The problem is COVID has wreaked havoc on our community and every one of us are short-staffed. We can't find staff and we're all struggling to do our own jobs. And so when we pulled together a coalition to address the opioid epidemic, one of the best practices, according to the Samson model, is that you would have a coalition leader. That's going to be the first charge of business to hire a coalition leader to bring the community players together and to be able to deliver those services. The Alpha Center is an appropriate place for that to happen, like it was with the gang grant when we worked with the school district, because we have to abide by best practices. If I'm not abiding by best practices, then I do not receive funds from the feds. These dollars will be reoccurring and so there is limitations, but this, what they're looking at, the board is not going to change the requirements for which we have to implement unless those best practices change. If those best practices change, I have to be retooled according to federal mandate in order to learn those best practices. The Alpha Center is a service delivery agency in our community that will then extend our tentacles to work with law enforcement, EMS, the county in order for those funds then to get into the hands. My intent is not, that money will not sit at the Alpha Center. It will get out in the community where it needs to go. But it will be a coalition leader who is driving those tools and techniques that needs one person to do it. I can assure you right now, Danny Temple probably wouldn't want to be the one driving all of those because I can tell you, I don't even have enough time to drive. That is a huge responsibility. But the call to action came whenever there's 19 people who overdosed on two streets. And the question that I asked and that our sheriff asked was, what are we not doing that needs to be done to save a life? And there were many tools and techniques that we could have done had we been more connected. I'm not going to lie to you, Alpha Center could have done a lot better job than what we were doing. But we got to be connected and we learned through that gang grant and we still have a lot of programs. I will tell you right now, the Boys and Girls Club of Kershaw County is one of the best programs that ever came out. The reduction of foot traffic throughout our community, those kids have places to go. They have activities. They get job skills ready. That was the fruit of the labor of our community coming together. This is the same opportunity for us to be able to have those same efforts again. And it will be a community program with a community coalition that sits together, that drives and makes those decisions. If this is bestowed upon the Alpha Center to be the applicant for it, then that is the intent in which I will go to drive the funding. The funding will open up in February again for us with a closed date on February the 28th.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
So I know there's another pot of money, Ms. Jones.
Yes.
It's a 15% from the state. You also need that authority, if I'm not mistaken, to draw on that as well. So that needs to be in the written authorization.
The, the money right now that we withdraw on would be the guarantor political subdivision. And right now, what the chairman proposed is the money that I would propose. And with all due respect to county council and transparency, is as money comes in, the dialogue needs to be, and Danny brought this up and Gerald whenever I spoke with them, is sustainability of the program. This is going to be some reoccurring dollars, but we don't know because it's based on per capita in each county. So I'm currently working with my Chesterfield and my Lee Counties as well. We represent them. So we won't know the exact amount, but what I would be looking for is to go after the guaranteed political subdivision sub-funds and to draw down on those and for us to reserve the right to come back and for county council to do a reallocation as we move forward for more transparency.
Yes, ma'am, and I got that part, but that's a different part of money that you have to apply for that, that's not into this 561-22803.
Yes, Mr. Tucker, that's correct.
So I'll let Madam Chair explain a little bit more.
We might need to get some legal clarity on this, the discretionary sub-fund. I don't see in the technical requirements where it says that you can give approval to our participating political subdivision. I see it.
I could offer clarification.
Okay, yes, please.
There's two pots of money.
Right.
And so the discretionary sub-funds, those open up, those actually open up at a, they're two different pots, okay? I could apply for those anytime I want to, okay?
Okay.
And those are opened up to pretty much anybody. What happens on those is they become under a strict scrutiny because they're not coming under the guarantor political subdivision.
Okay.
And those are going to be a lot different with, Roberta from our state office has moved over to look at those grant funds and those are some that will go out to like faith-based communities or reaching out for those. Those are going out, boys and girls clubs, but you still have to deliver. But then they have to prove that they can deliver those and then receive those technical funds on them. So you can go after them over here and then there's the guaranteed funds. What I will share with you is if those guaranteed funds by our community are not used within a certain period of time, they will be redistributed to other communities using them. So the board is looking at those funds, how often do we draw down on them and how much are we using? Because the rules to play can change as they see that they're not being utilized within a community. And one of the things I will say is Danny was really good at meeting and us jockeying for us to be first at the table for it because some communities haven't even established how they're going to move forward with these funds, which is going to be challenging to move forward because they can have a reallocation to another county that is in need. So it's, to me, one of those things that's crucial for us to be proactive and to look at how we utilize them. And the more they sit there, the idea is then obviously this county may not use them and the board can reallocate. And that's written in the governing rules by the legislators.
Thank you.
I've got a question. We, we all know the opioid crisis is rampant, right? And talking about the overdoses in, in kids and that sort of thing, but also lots of adults face this, this terrible battle of addiction. Would it be possible to use those funds to, to build a facility, a rehabilitation facility? As to my knowledge, there's not one in Kershaw County that's an inpatient rehabilitation facility unless I'm wrong. I could be wrong.
I, if I could use those funds for infrastructure in any way, I would tell you the first thing we would probably look at doing is some type of detox. The unfortunate part, not a single one of those dollars can be used for building any type of facility.
Is there a way to, to, to use them for something that you're currently using and to reallocate other funds to fund a facility?
I can't supplant funds because that would be illegal in a.
We don't want to do anything illegal. I, I just, I just know that it would be needed. I'm just thinking.
Yeah, and I don't disagree because the unfortunate part about it, which Paul Napper was executive director and I was a deputy during 2008, the unfortunate part about it was a downward spiral of the economy. The first thing they asked was detox beds and inpatient facility beds and they've never come back. And right now, what we have is a critical need for individuals in need of detox. And right now, the average wait, unless you have cash available, is going to be about six to eight weeks. And the level of motivation at six to eight weeks is long gone because when someone walks in, you got a hit when the iron's hot. And that is the biggest challenge. I would love to say infrastructure dollars, I could figure out a way to do it. But, Mr. Brazel, I'd love, love if we could look at something like that for our community because it is greatly, greatly needed.
Well, maybe in the future, we can find a way to make that happen.
Absolutely, and I'd be the first to tell you, I'd jump on board for that as well as we've got some fabulous staff who are in recovery themselves, who are very interested in looking at trying to expand patient beds for Kershaw County because right now we have to send our, we have to send our clients out of community. And that is a challenge because our, our, our people want to stay in their community. They, they don't want to leave their loved ones for fear of when they come back, they may not be there. And so it's, it's a real thing. And to Mr. Brazel's point, overdose deaths are hitting 24 to 54-year-old range is the highest rate for overdose deaths. So that's a huge gap. It used to be smaller. The other thing too is gabapentin is now getting ready to hit us really hard too for abuse and overdose. So gabapentin mixed with benzos or pain pills are going to be really what the feds are looking at, the biggest wave that they're seeing coming now. And you don't think of gabapentin, you know? And so EMS is, we're getting ready to try and look at doing that. But that's where that coalition comes in and can send a call out to all of those coalition leaders and saying, hey, this is what we're seeing coming down. Or there's a connectivity at 2:00. Law enforcement contacts that coalition leader and then we have knock and drops going on doors by foot and walk telling my, the aunt, hey, you don't use drugs, but there was a notice on your door that said there's a bad batch of pills going around. Aunt tells the 14-year-old son, who then tells the dad who uses. Dad's got that same batch, but he hadn't used. That's how it works out there. It's word of mouth on the streets for what happens to individuals. And it is not the poor man, the rich man, the white man, the black man. It's every single person is affecting and you can scroll through Facebook. And what I always tell people when we're doing a DUI death for Kershaw County is, they, we ask, what is, what rate of DUIs do we want for Kershaw County? Zero, because are you willing to give up your loved one for them to be the one who died? So the only rate is zero and it is happening and no one plans for addiction to happen to them. No one plans for it, but it, it is like mental health. It's like, ooh, let's don't talk about it. But it is like mental health, it's like, ooh, let's don't talk about it. But millions of people recover and live productive lives. And we have a golden opportunity with this opioid money to make a big dent and impact. We may not know the lives we save, but we sure know the lives we lose and I'd rather read less of those right now. There's a grieving mother in our community right now that it breaks my heart. And it didn't have to be, but it is, but we can learn from it.
One more quick question. You spoke of hiring kind of a community organizer. I'm sure I'm not calling that correctly, what was it?
Well, I just caught it in there, it would be kind of the community liaison. Kevin Rose was the one for the grant, for the gang grant.
Okay.
And we actually wrote in the grant where we housed him at the school district because those funds were sent through the school district. But the Alpha Center was the one who spearheaded the whole grant. And Kevin basically was your, I call it your conductor on the train. He was your main person directing traffic, coordinating all the coalitions, meeting with the, meeting to make sure that the outcome measures were going okay. So if I'm giving law enforcement this amount of money to do X, are they producing this amount at X? Because that person still has to produce to you as well as to the opioid board. They have to submit a report that did you meet your deliverables of what you put in your grant? Because then if I don't meet those deliverables and y'all go back to ask for money and I didn't meet those deliverables, guess what they're going to say? You didn't do what you said you were going to do the first time, so why am I going to give you money the second time? So, we're in the age of accountability. And so everything we do, we have to put down. Every time somebody walks in my building and asks for Narcan, I have to document how many I actually reached out to and how many were reoccurring. And then the, right now, there's a mandate sent down from our state office. Based on the number of opioid overdoses in our community, I am charged with distributing X number of Narcans out in our community. And so, if I do not do that, guess what? They withhold my funds. So that's why we're at community events, passing out. We were at every parade this past year, just walking up to people, asking them to dispose of medications and giving them the bags, trying to get out to where people typically aren't. The biggest thing we had when I was on school board is, how do you get community engagement? That will be a forever question. How do you get parents involved? How do you get community engagement? Boots on the ground, how do you win election? Boots on the ground, that's the best way you do it. And so, that's where our prevention department comes into play. They put the boots on the ground and go out. And so this position will be in our prevention department. They put the boots on the ground and they go out in the community, they go into the schools. They are, they are the ones, United, collaborates with United Way. And they're the ones that when you whistle in the middle of the street and all the homeless people come out of the woods next to KFC, those are the ones we're checking on. Those are the ones, we go to the motel, those no-tail motels and we put in the bathrooms, hey, here's Narcan, this is what's going on. And you have to go where the people are at. And then we also have to hit the parents who don't want anybody to know, you know? We don't want to know anything. So you got that broad ray, you got a big brush, you got a stroke, and it's hard.
If I may ask one more question. The lady or gentleman that will occupy this position, post-recovery, someone's continued sobriety, is there a way to marry them with a local NA or AA program that's free? And there's a plethora of people that are willing to give support for free once someone is sober or even to get, help get them sober. I think sometimes maybe there's, there's an overwhelmed feeling when you're trying to help someone. And then there's, oh, the next new person that needs help and the next new person. But I think the biggest thing here is continued support and years and years of sobriety. So, I think if we could marry the Alpha Center with Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous, I think that'd be a beautiful thing.
And celebrate recovery as well as we've been having some other ones come into our community. And those are vital. One of the things that I will tell you is, not everybody gets sober in the same manner. It takes, it takes different ones. It used to be the old AA was the only way, that's not true anymore. So, reaching out to them, you're exactly right. AA and NA are incredible assets in our community along with our peer supports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, that was wonderful. I'm sorry, Ms. Addit, you run to the restroom. Would that funding be, would it be possible? I know, I know you mentioned infrastructure is a no-go. Would infrastructure include maybe possibly renting or some type of mobile crisis unit where you could travel around the community, maybe be visible? Would that, is that something or I guess that would be under infrastructure maybe?
Yeah, that one, I probably would need to call Roberta on that one because based on, if you look through the requirements of the delivery, it doesn't allow for certain purchases over a certain amount. But it doesn't mean that some of the rules could not change further down the road because I don't think, well, I shouldn't say I don't think. I, the amount that will continue to come into our community is going to be very impacting. And what you're talking about is, I've always said, the traveling prevention team and, you know, or road van or something, that's really one of the biggest waves going right now because that's how we deliver like opioid treatment in Chesterfield, is a mobile unit. And so, yes. And especially getting out to the rural communities are very, very important. I love the fact that we're going to have a facility now in, you know, the Mount Pisgah area that we can actually go and I can send prevention team out there on different activities and all. That's going to be fantastic. The churches out there are really good to us. So I, I agree with you on that. I'm not quite sure it's within the scope at the present time.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, on the website, they list the approved abatement strategies.
Yes.
So, anyone can go to that website and see what those are. She's well-versed in them. I want to thank you for your willingness to partner with us on this. I know you don't have to and it's an addition, it's going to be an additional duty. But you truly are the expert and I can't thank you enough for your guidance and mentorship to the council and the government center on this. You helped me figure out the fund and what the strategies were. Vincent Shaheen helped me figure out the settlement and how we got to this, so I can't thank you both enough. Mr. Templar, I have one question. If we apply for the fund ourselves and the application is approved, was the plan to designate that money to the Alpha Center already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so essentially, this removes us as the middleman since we do not know the abatement strategies and we don't know the core, what is it Mara, core?
The core strategies.
Core strategies of delivery. So, I absolutely think it's appropriate that our service provider of the county receives the funds and can also pool them as needed. Any other questions for Ms. Jones?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Mara.
You guys did a wonderful job.
Well, and I would just tell you this, I appreciate the trust y'all have in me for being able to do this. It's definitely a calling and I would tell you, there's no better place to be than the Alpha Center. And I always welcome any of y'all to come by and examine anything we're doing or to participate and be a part of it. Our doors are always open, so please, please come by and be a part of it. And we're getting ready, I will share with you, we're getting ready to start where we actually have animals for people with trauma. And so, Charlie Church, who was here for Jimmy swearing in, will be a therapy dog. And we have Goose who will be a therapy dog. And so, it has shown significant outcomes. So the Alpha Center is moving on to working with people who have trauma and our veterans who have trauma, working with them on treatment modalities. So we'll be working with veterans to develop our next program too. So I look forward to being able to share that with y'all as well. And y'all can come by and see Goose and Charlie Church.
That's awesome. I need to sign my dog.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, I'm ready to call for the vote, the vote on authorizing the chair to execute a letter to the Opioid Recovery Fund Board granting approval to the Alpha Center to apply for those sub-funds.
Madam Chair, before we cover them, just want to reiterate that the things that we spoke about being the authorization letter to the Alpha Center as far as the reporting period and, you know, for her to come back, please.
Okay. Mr. DeBose, do we need a contract or an agreement with the Alpha Center that states when the report will come back to us or is it...
They're going to have to enter into agreements to get the funds.
Okay, okay.
And that will specify the community has to be involved, which would be the county council.
So this is the, this is the authorization for her to go in and pool? And then when the funds are received, we will enter a contractual agreement?
No, I'll have to have a letter, yeah, to submit with the application.
Okay, yep. Did that answer your question?
Yes ma'am.
Right, all those in favor of giving the Alpha Behavioral Health Center authorization to pool the guaranteed political sub-funds for the opioid settlement indicate by raising your hand? Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, myself, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Brazel. And Mr. Jones has recused himself. With that, the funding authorization has passed. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Russell, for getting Mr. Jones. Next item on the agenda is the Cassett Fire Station update. This was originally put on the agenda by, under public presentation and we expected to get a public presentation from Mr. Templar. At this time, Danny, I'd like to recognize you to go ahead with that update as you were planning. We'll just wait for Mr. Jones.
Okay, do you want me to wait until he's in to start? Sure, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Jones would not like us to wait for him, so if you can proceed with the update.
Madam Chair, members of council, I think this is the presentation everybody's been looking for tonight on this agenda. So what I wanted to do is just index everybody into where we stand on this, this project. It's been a long, long, ongoing project. It started way back when we took up the Ad-Hoc Committee for fire, increased fire protection. You go to the next slide, please. The initial Ad-Hoc recommendations, you'll hear terms, if you look back enough into this project, you'll hear hub and spoke. And what the spirit of that was is to have two, two locations specified by this, the recommendations of the Ad-Hoc Committee to serve as hubs for strategic parts of the county. You see Blaney is an obvious choice with all the density down there in that portion of the county. And then Cassett Fire Department was selected for the northern hub, if you will. It allowed them to reach up into the Bethune area and on over into other areas in terms of response times, cutting down response times and things of that nature. Next slide. So what we did, we based a call data at the time and correlated that into a heat map assisted by our GIS programs we had at the time. So this, this allowed us to really look and see where the activity was in Kershaw County and how we could better deploy our resources as it relates to this hub and spoke. Next slide. So this is the most recent map here. You could see Cassett is below the blue area there. And as you would expect, the Blaney area down there is pretty, pretty bright red, a lot of activity. So, up in this area, again, the spirit was to be more centralized and have an outreach into these areas to, again, reduce response times. Next. So this, this brings us here today to this current configuration for the Cassett Fire Station. A little background on the Cassett, the old Cassett Fire Station, somebody mentioned there were some mold issues in there and that is correct. It was also situated in a very small lot. And it was kind of the impetus for us to, when we go and replace EMS stations and fire stations, is to not buy just enough land. Our goal was at the time to look for five-acre plots. That gave us a little bit of expandability and it would allow us to fit the facility on the site. As you can see here, the colored area is concrete, so that's a lot of impervious surfaces, which we'll get into when it relates to drainage. That rainwater that would normally absorb into that ground covered by an impervious surface has to be collected and put into a detention pond per dehac. So, knowing that, we knew we would need going forward much larger footprints for future sites. So, this, the search for this land started probably in around, I would say, 2017 or 18, somewhere there. Probably 18 at the, throughout the conclusion of the Ad-Hoc Committee. We knew we needed to locate somewhere away from where we were, we needed to replace that station. But we also wanted to remain within the call response area for the purposes of the ISO rating for this station. So, the previous emergency management director was able to cold-call the owners of this parcel here. And they agreed to sell the parcel. It was given at a discount and because they knew a fire station was going there. It was a larger tract than what we needed. It did not fit the 12 acre, or the five-acre normal footprint that we would look for, but they were not willing to subdivide or sell less than that. So, we didn't want to miss the opportunity for the reduced price and it was, it was a very good price. I think the total was $59,000 for this approximately 12-acre parcel. So, that, again, I don't think we would have found a, at the time, a better location with a willing seller. And that was the key portion there is a willing seller. And this family was more than willing. And they were pretty excited about having a fire station out in Cassett. So, that was fairly well attainable. So, with any project in, with our EMS stations or fire stations or anything we build, we go through a due diligence process. We look at geotechnical information, will the soil support the structure? And especially here with heavy trucks, will the, will the soil compaction be an issue with cracking concrete and settling foundations? It's what we're plagued with now. We don't want to repeat what we have and have fire stations that just are not a 30-year structure. So, a geotechnical report was commissioned by a company called ESP. And that was in, the report came back to us, it was finished in October 2019. I think they started even earlier in September, actually doing the work. So they did core samples and that just let us know how much soil would have to be removed, if any, on topsoil to get down to the good soil, for lack of better terms. And they did samples, I think 11 samples throughout. If you can go to that, advance the slides for me. Keep going, keep going, there's that very last slide, I believe, it was, right here. So this is what, this was back in 2019, this is what they were given. I know there was some discussion about the, a decision being made to just move the, the the facility from the, the upper right would be the Dollar General area. That was not true, this was back in 2019. So this was always the original site, there was never a... There was never a previous site. I think some people were confused, even on staff, that it would go down near the Dollar General, but that was never the intent. As you can see, the shape of this parcel, it narrows. It's bordered by Highway One. It's also bordered at the back by the railroad track. So it tends to narrow slightly, but enough to make it not a, with what we had to do with a retention pond, the amount of concrete, the turnaround, the turn radius for the trucks, that was not necessarily the best spot. So moving forward, we did these tests, and this site was suitable per this report. And of course, if you look out there now, there's a lot of topsoil removed, but that was what was necessary to get down to the more sturdier soil, if you will. So go back up to the previous, hold right there. So this just kind of lets you see a little bit how that's kind of a Keystone-shaped parcel, if you will, narrow at one end, a little wider on the other. Back to the original, where we're at right now. I'm sorry, the very first slide, the current configuration, sorry. Yeah. So this, as you can see, with this kind of a lightbulb shape, for lack of better terms, the facility is further back from the road, and we have abided by all setbacks. We've exceeded the legal setbacks on all of our parameters. There's the retention pond at the back, which is necessary. This site has been engineered. The structure has been designed by an architect. And so every facet of what we expect any commercial building to have in terms of the ability to build and proceed forward within specs and ordinances and all applicable laws and regulations has been met and, in my mind, exceeded. So having said all that, when this came about, obviously when we started clearing the land, there was some concern that came up from the neighbors right next door, the Gadsbees. And if y'all want to go into that, I can. If not, I can answer any questions if anybody has them right now. I don't want to get too ahead of myself.
Any questions yet?
I just want to know if there's options.
Yeah, yeah. So to try to tell the story, I was contacted by Councilman Cato about some concerns from the homeowners, and I immediately reached out to them. They were out of town, and just kind of let them know that when they got back, we know, I would like to meet with them as it relates to any of their concerns, and also let them know that we would have them involved in any landscape plan they had. And, you know, to be fair to the Gadsbees, they never once indicated that they didn't want us next to them or in Cassett or anywhere near them. They, I understand their concerns. Madam Chair, you and I went out and met with them on the property.
We did.
I completely understand their concerns. And my commitment to them would, is that I would do anything and everything possible that was both reasonable and fiscally responsible to address their concerns, because we want to be good neighbors. We have a situation at one of our facilities where we're just, there's a, it's not a very good neighborly situation. So we don't want to repeat history. We want to, we want to start clean and make these facilities a, a true amendment to the community, and an increase of value to the community, and it's clearly needed out there. So we worked with them, we went out and talked with them about the, their concerns and about moving it, moving the station. There's several options in here I will go through, and I have some relative costs as well. So given the fact that there was some discord from the entire situation, we halted progress. There was no, I didn't know what the will of council would be. So it didn't make any sense to continue to build up a surface that may not be the surface or target surface for this structure. So, you know, in the world of construction, there was multiple pieces of equipment out there, and they're not making money by idling equipment. So they demobilized, removed potentially all of the equipment from out there, because they had to go to the next job that's going to pay their bills. So totally understood that. So there was a demobilization out there, and we paused, because the council meeting was the following Tuesday, so it wasn't like we were pausing for months on end. So the goal was to come here tonight, offer some salute, or some options, rather, and have just a healthy discussion in the public eye about what can be done and how do we meet in the middle. So if you'll go to the, so let me just explain this a little bit right here. If you'll notice there, again, that colored area is the concrete around there, the triangle at the, or the rectangle at the top is actually the bays, and then there's the living area, and there's a parking space down below. So that's kind of, kind of be the focus of, for the options as we go through. So go to the next one, please, Ryan. So option one was to move the entire facility, the entire footprint, 100 feet to the north, if you will, going up Highway One. In this, I was educated myself in this whole process. It's not just easy, because, you know, we haven't poured any forms, there's no underground utilities yet, we're just in the site prep. But with the amount of topsoil that had to be removed based on those geotechnical reports, there's a large pile of dirt out there, and that would have to be replicated. We would have to go back to dehec, and this is going to be true for all of the options here. We'll have to remobilize equipment, which we'll have to do regardless. We'll have to re-engineer the site. We would have to acquire another DOT permit, because we have a curb cut for Highway One there, which is, the line of sight is there. It's not going to be anything earth-shattering. So that's not, but there's a cost related to that. Then we would have to have another dehec land disturbance permit, because we did not, we are not permitted to disturb any land to the north of this. So all of these efforts that we have done so far to get us to this point would have to be replicated again, unfortunately, at the same cost. Probably the only cost that would not be as much is the removal of trees and any vegetation to the north, because, you know, you're talking 100 feet. So another geotech survey, because the focus of the geotech bores, I think there were seven of them performed in the area of where we were going to set the actual structure. So we have a larger sample to make a better...
Mr. Templar, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Can we go back to the bore footprint, please?
Yes. Can you go back to that, Ryan?
I think it's the last photo.
Yeah, it's the last slide.
It has the 11 bore samples on it. Yes. I do see what you're talking about, where the majority are over there to the west. Is there a reason that there were that many bore samples there?
Well, yes, because that was the proposed site back in 19. So it was never, they've, they performed several bores throughout the parcel, but the bulk of them were in the footprint of the building where it was going to sit itself, with a few you could see in the concrete turnaround.
So the proposed site in 2019, they bored more there because it was proposed. How was that site proposed or selected?
It was just always, I wasn't part of the selection, but it was through the previous emergency management director and staff, it was selected to go on that end. Also, the, and I know it's a small sample size, so just kind of take this with a grain of salt, but those bore sites, nine, 10, and 11, based on the report, the, there was much, a much thicker layer of what they considered poor sandy soil. Again, it's a smaller sample size, and we've got, you know, six or seven bores down here, and the amount of material needed to be removed of what they considered topsoil, poor-quality topsoil, was markedly less based on this report.
But we found that out after it had already been proposed, that location?
Right, right. So again, going with a larger sample size at the site, it was, we found that out through the geotechnics.
Do we have any information on the proposal process for the EMS director and county staff on this selection, this drawing that we're looking at right here? We have any insight at all to why it was selected?
No, I don't.
Because we didn't have the bore samples yet.
Right. So the bore samples came afterwards, and I'm, now, I do know that they did speak with the homeowner. I think the Gadsbees are the second homeowner from the original homeowner who we, I think we, staff made a kind of a cold-call, knock-and-talk on the door and said, hey, we're looking at putting a, any EMS, or I'm sorry, a fire station next door. And there was no objection to, from, at the old homeowner in 2019, I think, so the original homeowner.
And I'm asking, because even before we took samples, before we went to planning, when you look at this drawing, it is on the edge of the property from the very beginning. And in our meeting last Thursday with the homeowner, you, Gerald, myself, and the project manager, it was said that that proposed location was there to leave room for a park.
A park? The park was never discussed.
So I just, I need some information from the very beginning why it is all the way over there. And Mr. Furlong did say that he was told to make room for a park, so...
Right. So it, the park was more so an opportunity to, what are we going to do with the rest of the land? You know, could we add more value to the community out there with, you know, a walking trail was something that was talked about, but it was never something that we had done any due diligence to this level to look into.
Okay.
Again, it was just, if we're going to put a fire station out there, and that was never a driver in any of what we were going to do, as far as location.
Okay.
Again...
Are you sure that that wasn't a driver? I mean, it was talked about amongst staff, and then they come up with this?
Yeah. So with that, I think there would have been, and I'm making an assumption here, that, you know, to maybe not split it or have it offset on the parcel location. But again, I wasn't part of any of those conversations or any of that strategy.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Templar, is your project manager here?
Yes.
Can you come up and talk to us for a minute?
Sure, sure. Pete?
Good afternoon. I say a good afternoon.
Hey, Mr. Furlong, put the mic closer to your mouth, please.
Gene Falkenberry decided he wanted the fire station at the desired location. I came up with a layout of the proposed fire station based upon the Elgin or Blaney Fire Station. To validate a decision to build there, we had to go through and do geotech reports. We did not want to build on that location if the soil was bad. So step one is to decide on a site. Step two is to determine whether this site is acceptable. Step three is determine, is the county willing to spend the money to build on the site, given the geotech? And then we proceed with writing the request for bid.
All right, I have some questions. When I got calls, I got calls about this being right next to the house. And I was told that was the most suitable place for it due to some soil sample checks. And then I hear that in a meeting, it was mentioned by you, sir, that you left room, there was going to be a park next to the fire department.
Danny's statement was correct.
Which was?
We had 12 acres of land. We were using, at that time, three acres for the fire station. And the question was, okay, what are the possible uses of that land?
And that's not for y'all to decide, sir? That's what County Council decides?
This was, this was, we haven't even come to the council for any plans. This was in staff discussions. Could there be a park there? And the thought came up, and they said, yeah, we could probably put a park there, but we're going to build a fire station.
So the three acres for the fire station did another acre just in case a park was going to be on?
No, we had three acres of the fire station and nine acres of the 12 for some future use by the county.
Was any land cleared off in preparation for the possibility of a park?
No. If you go up there right now, the land is as it was when we purchased the property, except the power line is no longer through the center of the property.
How many acres did we clear?
It has not been cleared.
No land's been cleared?
Other than for the fire station, no land has been cleared.
Four, approximately four acres, correct, Mr. Templar?
For the fire station?
For the fire station.
I think it's three or four acres, yes. That's been cleared.
If I may, Mr. Jones?
Can I say one thing? I'm going to be quiet on this until you finish.
No, I want you to get your questions in.
Yeah, I have some questions. First off, I just want to say to all the folks in here, we care about you guys, we care about Cassett. You're going to get your fire department. The fire station is going there. It's not going to be taken away. That is propaganda, and that is not true. Nobody up here wanted to get rid of the Cassett Fire Department. I got calls that there were some things going on that weren't appropriate. As a County Council member, I've got to check into those things, and I did check into those things. Mr. Templar, why did you shut the project down?
Well, again...
Because they've been talking to Ms. Quinn, like she shut the project down, but she didn't.
No, no, no. That was a decision by myself, speaking with Pete, because we were so close to this meeting, it was a matter of days, we shut the project down, because it didn't make sense to spend money on a project or a site that may not be the site tomorrow. So I didn't want to continue to haul dirt in there and continue to increase a cost that may not be the target site. So, yes.
So you figured, and the weekend was involved in that?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So it wasn't a whole lot of time lost if it continues on?
No, sir. You know, if we resume tomorrow, depending on what, it's a week.
Well, I make no apologies for having questions when I'm told that there's timber being cut to put a park on. I make no apologies when I see a family here, and let me tell you something, whether it was anybody out here, if it was your family, I'd be fighting the same way, to say, let's move that thing 100 feet or whatever, let's give these people a little bit more breathing room. You know, I would do that. But bottom line is, whatever the council's will is tonight is what it is. But I just want to make sure we know what we're doing, we have accountability, you know, who decided, because, you know, you and I, we talked a lot, and you have some of the answers that I needed as well, because you just got here, you're trying to find out, fill everything out yourself as well. Can I ask you just a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
You might want to stay, Mr. Pete, because you may have an answer. So what did we pay for the land? I hope I didn't miss that.
That was $59,000.
Good. That was a good deal.
Yes, sir.
No question about that. And was there an original location? I know it was repeated here again, but I just want you...
No, sir. This was the original location.
I got you. And the total budget for the project is, as we stand?
As we stand, it's probably about $2.6 million.
And that's a pretty nice fire department?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is. What is the expected completion date?
Well, that's kind of in the air right now, depending, but Pete, what would you say? say?
It's, uh, they say they're going to be finished, fire services will be in the building end of September, early October. Could be in there earlier, but, um, that's what their schedule shows.
Okay. Now, this is a question I, I, I want you to think about when you answer it. There's four acres. Do you think that four acres is a large portion, portion of land to clear for the size of the fire department we're putting in there?
Um, and, and that's a great question. I think that's something that needs to be really discussed. So, looking at the, the layout, regardless of where we center it, we're going to need to clear that amount just because of the stormwater runoff, and we have to, we have to capture all water that would, that is offset by an impervious surface, which is the concrete. There's a lot of concrete out there. So, the footprint is larger just because we have to have a large retention pond to offset any rainwater that cannot be absorbed into the soil.
One of the things that Vic Carpenter emphasized to me is that he did not want a stripping of the land, okay? It was strictly forbidden. There's a forty-eight inch oak on that property that's being retained. In the request for bid, I told all bidders that I was going to walk the site with them and go over and look at every single tree that would be saved. A large number of the trees were taken up ground level to allow for flow. So, we had to put these dykes, I call them dykes, they become gullies.
How much was the land raised?
Uh, I think the, the property is raised five, six, five or six feet.
And that's, and that one that causes a problem with the Gatsby's because with the privacy fence now, that's above the private fence?
Well, the...
As far as line of sight?
The reason for raising it up five to six feet is, we had, we had US one or Highway one. Any water off Highway one, if we didn't raise the property, would flood the fire station every time it rained.
I get that.
Okay? So, when, when you do the gullies, which are required by DHEC, we could have left the trees in there and put the drainage ditch system in with the trees still present. But in four years, those trees would be dead. You don't put soil above a tree above the native level unless you want to kill it.
You, you, you know, we talk about soil, where things can go, where things should not go. I can assure y'all this, I sat right here with Mr. Boehner Boykin, sitting out there, and I know you know who he is, or maybe you do, maybe you don't.
I don't know him by name.
Okay, well, anyway, he was one of the leading experts in soil.
Oh, yeah, okay, yes.
Yeah, lived in Boykin.
Yes.
I told county council, do not use the land where the college is at. That is swamp land, but we did it, they did it, and it cost a huge fortune to do it. So, bottom line is, this county has put buildings on properties that are a whole, whole lot more worse than the middle of this property that we're looking at here. And that, that's just a concern of mine. I feel like whenever we have the opportunity to help somebody, what in the world is it going to matter if it's in the middle or somewhere else or a hundred, two hundred feet away from their property? But I can tell you this right now, as, as, as I heard them say, and I'm going to say to you, I don't live there, nobody else in this room lives there, but they're going to live there, and they're going to have to live with it when we're all gone. And, uh, yes, you can.
Um, on that subject, so the rest of the property, so the nine acres towards the Dollar General, do we know any idea how much build up that would have taken?
No, we did not, we did not do a survey, we did not do a, a topo. A topo map would tell you the layout of the land. So, if we, if there is interest, we'd have to do a topo of the whole property, we'd have to do geotech for the whole property, you know, that's...
And is that typical to not do on the whole property?
Well, we, you do a, you do geotech and a topo on the property you're interested in building on.
Okay.
Okay.
But we were never interested in building on that part? That's...
Oh, no, on the nine acres, no, ma'am, we were not.
Right. So, my concern is that this proposed drawing in 2019 was already influenced by the park and walking trail discussion. No one even thought about putting it anywhere else because they were already influenced by the future use, what are we going to do here?
I, I think you have the logic inconsistent with my memory.
Okay.
All right? Gene Falkenberry and I went out there after they bought the land, and Gene walked to the area where the current, where the fire station is being constructed, and he determined that that was the property he wanted to, that's where he wanted to put the fire station, was on that property.
Okay.
As a result of that, three or four acres, there were some conceptual thoughts about what you could do with the other nine acres. Is the county wasting money buying twelve acres when all we're doing is using three acres or four acres? And the thoughts at that time were, yes, there are a number of things that the county could do with that property after the fire station was built.
Okay, thank you.
And that's where, that's where the parks came up.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Brazel.
Um, I can see on the drawing, it's five hundred and thirty feet deep where the proposed building is or where the building is being built. Um, what's the depth on the other end down at the Dollar General? I can't see on the drawing, it, it doesn't show a, a depth.
It would look to me, it'd be about four hundred and eighty feet.
Four eighty?
Four eighty. If you won, if you wanted a, a guess.
Okay. Um, so what, what do we, and I apologize, I missed the, the very beginning of this discussion. What would the, the timeline and cost be if we moved the pad over, say, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred feet? If you move it, I, I suppose a hundred feet, you could move it four hundred feet and it wouldn't, wouldn't change anything because you've got to start over.
You just start over.
We're looking at what?
You're, you're talking, um, probably a quarter of a million dollars to get to where, no, you'd, no, to get to where you are now, if you start over, it's probably a quarter of a million dollars. The money you spent on the existing site is gone.
How much would that be?
Can we go to the slide that shows those options?
Two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars had been spent.
Option one.
There's a slide for that, Mr. Brazel.
Thank you.
Option one moves the entire site. Right now, the driveway is sixty feet from the, uh, property line. If we took and moved it forty feet to make the prop, make it a hundred feet from the property line, then we would have to move the construction entrance, we'd have to take that out, put a new construction entrance and get all SE DOT permits done, S and DHEC, all the DHEC permits would have to be resubmitted and redone. The pond, whether it would stay its current configuration or not, I'm not a, I'm not a flood guy, so I couldn't tell you. Optimistically, yeah, it'd be nice to use it. Pessimistically, DHEC will say, move it.
Did we meet all setback requirements?
Oh, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
What are the setback requirements?
So, currently, this structure is a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property line.
The, the building, the living space building is a hundred and fifteen feet away from the property line.
And what's the requirement?
Ten feet.
Ten feet from building on one property to building on another property? Of a, of a separate ownership?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what planning and zoning told me when I built my house, I had to be at least ten feet away. And I put my garage ten feet away.
I think different zoning require, requirements have different setbacks, but I think typical is ten to fifteen.
Yeah.
From, from the county's property line, is there any setback requirement from the homeowner's property line or the homeowner's building?
No.
Okay.
I think it's just property line.
Okay.
That's what setbacks based on.
So, we could build something ten feet from ours, somebody else builds something ten feet from ours, that's twenty feet buffer. Okay.
Correct.
That's when you, that's when you're holding hands out, out the window with your neighbors a little close.
If I can, Mr. Brazel, help me with this. A quarter of a million dollars to just move it a hundred, two hundred feet? You got a two point four million dollar project? I mean, I, I just can't see what would cost that much money.
Well, I think...
Mr. Templar, do you have a...
I would have to defer to him.
You have an estimate.
There is an estimate slide.
You, you're an engineer, right?
Do we have one estimate or two or three or what?
We have all of them. There we go. Cost and time impacts.
Cost for each option, we have three options. And, and the options were driven by our conversation out at the site with the Gatsby's. Madam Chair, you were present, and we kind of went through a couple things, what would be amenable for them, and that, that was the driver for these options tonight.
Okay.
We walked and measured ninety-seven feet. So, the, the buffer at the entrance to the Gatsby's property, that's about ninety-seven feet. So, that's where, I'm guessing, Mr. Templar, that's where you, you, you used the hundred feet for this cost estimate?
Yeah, to the, you're right, to the structure.
Okay.
So, structure to property line is one fifteen-ish.
Can I, can I ask, because I didn't get this amount, what's the current cost as of today that we've spent?
Two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Plus.
Two hundred and seventy-two.
Yes.
On this first option, fifty thousand dollars with the trees and shrubbery, is that, is that what Kershaw County has offered?
That, that would be part of, if, if we did not move anything tonight, um, one of the first conversations I had with the Gatsby's was that they would be completely involved in the landscape appearance of what we put in that buffer. So, there's nothing there now, but we have every intent to put back a robust landscape buffer between their house and ours, um, even considering the elevation change, um, how could we take advantage of that?
And then we've got remobilization and demobilization, fifty thousand. Have we, have people moved their equipment already?
No, that is the estimate that the contractor gave me.
Okay, but we have not told them to leave yet.
We have, the tractors are still there. They're not going to move it.
They were there yesterday when I went up.
They will move the tractors if the result of this meeting results in significant changes to their schedule or the location of the facility. So, there is some cost savings that the contractor is betting on by leaving the tractors.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to think of a way to, to mitigate sound. Moving at a hundred or, or even two hundred feet probably won't mitigate sound that well.
Well...
Is there some sort of a wall or, or barrier that could be built to, to help?
The three, the five, the fifty thousand dollars assumes the planting of three hundred and sixty-three conifer bushes. Two rows, a foot and a half, three feet separating the two rows with three feet between each plant. So, the, the intent of two rows is to, is to eliminate any light. Light is the way you measure if you have sound penetration. So, if you have a heavy enough bush, which is a conifer is, it's a, it's an evergreen in it, it's thick and bushy.
I followed you to that point. I studied trees in school. You lost me on everything else, though.
And also, Mr. Pete, you're saying that we, so we spent a quarter of a million dollars for one week worth of, we spent a quarter of a million dollars on one week worth of work?
Um, you spent a quarter of a million dollars on almost three weeks of work.
Three weeks.
Okay.
Let me ask you about the, it, does the driveway need to be a hundred and fifty feet long and could this easily fit further up the property?
I have not looked at whether, um, it would fit up the property. The length of the driveway is based upon Blaney and the ability to get trucks in and out of the fire station. When you're talking a ladder truck, you are talking a long truck with a large turning radius. So, it cannot be a thirty-foot driveway unless you want to block Highway one every time you took a, a ladder truck in and out. So, the idea is you bring the ladder truck in, you can park it in front, you can drive it around the back. There's no obstruction of traffic on Highway one.
Okay. Um, Mr. Pete, I have a question, and excuse my ignorance in this. We've been at this project three weeks. It's cost two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
If we start over tomorrow, it will take five months and five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars instead of three more weeks and two hundred and seventy-two thousand more?
Are we, are you saying starting over as in...
Clearing the trees, so that...
You're, so you're moving the whole property?
Yes.
It's, you have to redo the engineering, probably have to do some architectural work, I don't think you're, if you'd have any, it's very, very minimal.
Okay.
I have to do all the geotech, you have to do the survey, you have to meet with DHEC, you have to meet with SE DOT, you have to remove the old entrance, okay? Because DHEC won't...
So, where's the extra expense that take, that doubles it?
I think...
Am I, am I making sense to anyone?
I think a lot of it's in engineering cost.
Well, it's also the first... So, it's, it's...
It, it'd probably be just as easy to move it a mile down the road. It wouldn't cost, it, the cost wouldn't change a whole lot, would it?
No, except buying this property.
Right.
Yeah.
And we'd be starting from scratch.
Absolutely.
You know, I made some comparisons, I, I did, I went and did some research, and I just want to read these to you. Um, and just a few, few thoughts that were based on some of the calls I received. You know, I was checking compared, number one, like compare other county-owned buildings and land. I, I found out that seven point five acres for, uh, not only Blaney Fire Department, which is staffed twenty-four hours a day, but also for a recycling center and EMS station, staffed twenty-four hours a day. Then I found out there was one point five acre lot for EMS station on Messer Lane and Lugoff staffed twenty-four hours a day, and less than one acre for Shepherd Fire Department, uh, it, it, you know, Department off Rogers Road and Cassett, and point eighty-two acres, point eight-two acres for Antioch Fire Department on Highway thirty-four in Camden and, uh, other comparisons, there was one point three-five acres for all of Lugoff Fire Department, one point three-five acres for all of Lugoff Fire Department. Now, Camden, they had ten point nineteen acres for the entire Camden Fire, City Hall Fire Department Headquarters and their public works combined, and then one point ten acres for Camden Fire Department Substation and a water tower on SC ninety-seven. And all this data is straight off our county GIS. That's why I felt like, well, four acres, it must have been, we must have been looking at another, our thinking in our minds of there, for a future, another, for the future of a park, because I kept hearing parks come up.
It's not, Jimmy, it, parks were a, a conceptual thought of what you would do with extra land. We wanted to, we didn't...
Excuse me, Mr. Pete, I'm so sorry. If you are here to, um, witness the county council meeting, I need you to keep the noise to a minimum and no sidebar conversations and respect the speaker. Thank you.
Could we have put this on two acres of land? Yes. We could have taken and minimized, taken the land, the buffer between the adjacent property owner and the, and the driveway to the absolute minimum. It could have been maybe thirty feet, okay? We could have probably done the same on the other way, other side. But when we were out there, Gene said he wants the building a hundred feet away from the property line. That was his specific direction to me. And as a good engineer, I gave him a hundred and fifteen.
Well, I think it was, I think it was...
And that, that takes land.
Well, and, and if I may interject something here with those, those lot sizes, um, some of those are, there's some assumptions there of a different way of handling stormwater. Mesa Lane, I think, is curbed and gutted, and, um, some of the stuff in the city has, has a, I think is in the MS four stormwater. So, the way we're having to handle our stormwater out there is markedly different with swells and, um, um...
I think there was poor planning on this, Mr. Templar. I know you're a deputy county minister, but I think there was poor planning on this when you put something on top of another residence, and I don't care who likes it or don't like it, it's as simple as that. Bottom line is, these folks are going to have to live by that the rest of their lives. They invest it. My home is my biggest investment, and I think this county has an opportunity to do the right thing by some folks, and it won't, it, it, it will, they will still get the And it won't, it, it, it will, they will still get the fire department. Still going to happen. But that's where I stand. And I'm not changing my mind.
Mr. Tucker?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Pete. And to get some clarity, so these bushes that you're planning on planting, how tall are they when you initially planted them?
They grow about two to three feet a year.
Okay, so.
And I'm buying a two to three-foot bush.
You're buying a two to three-foot bush?
Yeah. So, five years from now, it'll be, if I do the math right, it'll be a ten-foot high bush.
And then any of this options that you're giving us, did you ever consider a taller wall or barrier along with those bushes to go in there? Because.
The wall, the bear, the tree barrier is, is a wall. If you, a wall is expensive. You know, these, these walls along.
Well, when I'm talking about sound barrier walls, like a taller fence, you know, anything can block sound. It may not be as good as other things, but no, I'm not trying to build Taj Mahal with a wall like over to by Clemson, Clemson Road over there on I-20. But I'm talking about, you know, they got a beautiful fence out there. I rode out there yesterday, took pictures. Got them on my phone. But due to the, the rise of the driveway and the pad, that fence is not going to do a lot of good for them to block sound or sight from their house. So, my question is, while we've got this two-foot, three-foot tree waiting five years to grow, could there be a fence that is taller and neater along there as well that could help protect their home from noise and view?
Sammy, I think the county would do whatever the council will fund.
Well, I'm trying to find something reasonable as a solution, because sitting here looking at these numbers, I, I want to know if they move it two feet, where they going to get a half a million dollars to pay for it?
Well, I have a question on that. The total cost, five hundred and forty-one thousand, does that include the two hundred and seventy-two we've already spent?
No.
The two seventy-two is, is eliminate, is out of the two point six. We basically have two seven, two, a high two-seven number. So, the, all the inflation costs are in, are based upon the, the remaining contract costs for the fire station.
We inflated double in three weeks?
No, I think he's referring to his contingency. Whenever you have a project of this size, there's usually a ten percent contingency clause. So, that if there's cost escalations, there's money appropriated to cover those escalations. I think that's what he's referring to.
The budget for the fire station is about two eight seven, or two, two seven or two eight. If you take the two seventy, two seventy-two out, it could be two five. If you take the two point six million dollars of work and you escalate it five months out, at the current inflation rate, which is about eight percent a year, you're going to get about an eighty-six thousand dollar increase simply by deferring.
Okay.
Okay?
I think also.
I, I cannot assume that the contractor has bought everything for the building yet.
Okay, so we're, we would lose the two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that we already spent?
Yes, ma'am.
And then have to pay whatever rate?
Two seventy-two again.
Okay.
If you, if you move the fire station to a different property.
And the five months will be to?
Inflation.
Okay.
The contractor will require an inflation adjustment, given the amount of inflation that is occurring right now.
And what happens in the five months? We redo this?
We do the, we go back to the engineer. Engineer does the drawings. Engineer takes three months to do the drawings and he goes to DHEC and requests their review of the permit. They go to SCDOT. SCDOT reviews the permit. And if everything goes right, you probably have five months between the time we tell the engineer to draw to the time we have a new station designed or location.
Okay, thank you.
Miss, Miss, Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Tucker?
Sir?
I worked under seven county administrators and I was department head. I ran five departments within the county. I've never been, I never have been given the authority to pick where a building was going to be put. And I was the project manager over the detention center. I mean, did you know about this? Because I know.
Well, I wasn't in on, I wasn't on that, first of all, that committee. I was on the adult committee that was talking about SROs and millage and commercial spending revenues. So, these spots and conversations with Gene and staff, I was not involved in. So, I'm taking the history from the people who was, which is Mr. Pete and Mr. Templar on, you know, this was the best location. And this is what they were trying to do, which was to fulfill, at that time, Mr. Gene's wishes. And staff had no kickback or problem with it, so, you know.
You know, I, I doubt very seriously here, and you guys know it, that the votes appear to change it. Okay? I'm probably just wasting my time even talking, but bottom line is, would y'all at least consider giving this man a decent buffer?
Well, that's what I was trying to work on in my conversation.
But can we at least do that?
I, I think that's, I think that's excellent idea. I think if we could appropriate a certain amount of money, that they could work with administrators on allocating the way they see fit. I mean, I think that's, you come in here with nothing. Just to leave with something is a huge win, especially in government.
Votes are not here to change it, I know that.
If, if I may.
I've been trying to get a boat ramp fixed for two years. Yeah.
Mr. Gadsby, I'm, I'm sorry. Unless you are called to the podium to be in the conversation, just, I understand.
And I don't know why anybody would object to giving a buffer to these folks.
No, absolutely not. I have two questions and it's, it's related, but in the beginning, were there any public notices sent out prior to construction beginning?
No.
Is that a common practice for Kershaw County to notify the public? Okay.
No.
I think there probably was somebody notified. I think a notice may have been sent out, Madam Chair.
A notice was sent out?
Well, I think there's some indication from some folks. I don't know that for sure, but, but of course, you were deputy county administrator at that time, weren't you?
No, before construction started three weeks ago, was there a notice sent out saying, hey, there'll be more traffic, more noise, construction in the area? Okay. I would ask this body to consider establishing some sort of policy for notification of the public. The Gadsbees could have easily been here before any money was spent on the site prep at all to discuss this. Mr. Cato?
I've been sitting here listening. I, I want to try and clarify some things. I had a few phone calls myself. Many from residents trying to encourage me to leave it as is, some. And, and I had a phone call from Mr. Gadsby. And I, and, and at the time, he was very upset. And I listened to him. Listened to everything he had to say. And, and I told him these words. I am brand new, was just elected to seat six. And I had no knowledge of the site plan or anything that was going on with this fire department. I wasn't privy to any of that information until I took the seat. So, I want to clarify that as far as some of the ones thinking that I should have, should have known more detail. I did not know any detail. Now, my, one of my questions. In two thousand and nineteen, when the site plan was put into place and the geological studies were done and you knew that this is where you wanted the building to go, did anybody talk to the landowner of the property in two thousand and nineteen?
We talked, Gene Falkenberry talked to the property owner when we initially were looking at that piece of property to put a fire station there.
Okay, so in two thousand and nineteen, when this plan was put together, the neighboring landowner, which now belongs to Mr. Gadsby, was talked to and was notified and didn't have a problem with it.
His only comment was, now that the county owns that land, can I ride my horses on it?
Okay.
That was his sole comment regarding the placement of a fire station.
And this may be a legal question, but if the, when the land was sold two years later, after the plan had been drawn, the geological studies, the engineering and everything had been done, two years later, I believe it was in two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. Gadsby bought the property. Was anybody legally responsible for letting him know that that fire station was going that close to the property line? Or was it something that should have been told by the person selling it or the real estate agent selling it?
I really don't know to answer that question, because it depends on the contract that was signed by the purchasers. And it depends on the due diligence clauses in the purchase contract. So, there's a lot of information I just don't know. And it also depends on whether the seller of the prior property considered it to be a detriment or not. I think you do have to tell people things that are detriments, but if he didn't consider it to be a detriment, then no, he wouldn't have been obligated to, if he did not consider that. And if, in fact, was not.
Mr. Templar, based off our codes, if a private person bought this land and they decided to build a house or put a trailer, how close could they have put that trailer to that property line?
Fifteen feet.
So, if it had been anybody other than Kershaw County, that person could have put something within fifteen feet of the property line. It could have been a dog pen, could have been a horse pasture, could have been a house, a trailer, whatever. My, my point that I'm trying to make is, is, is I, I really and truly, and believe me or not, I sympathize with you. Because I go by that place often and you're doing a remarkable job with it. And it looks good. But I can't see something that was already approved and put into place in two thousand and nineteen and all of this works went into it, changing something after all of this has been done, when the landowner at the time was notified and didn't have a problem with it. Now, Mr. Jones, I, I do agree with you. I believe that this was very poor planning on Kershaw County's part. I think we should have been a little bit more respectful of, even the landowner at the time, even though he didn't have, he didn't have a problem with it. Maybe we should have looked at doing something a little bit different. And I think this is something that this council needs to look into to make sure this does not happen again. But I can't see spending taxpayers' money. Ever, everybody always complains in here about how much money we spend. And I can't see spending that much money to relocate something a hundred feet. I do support whatever it takes to make Mr. Gadsby happy for a buffer between this station and that property line.
Mr. Cato, may I say something to you as well? You know, you're right, you were brand new, you weren't informed. Neither was I, and I was here. And, and nobody informed me of what they were doing up there as well. And, but I also didn't know about the budget we passed last time. I wasn't informed on that either with the operations of the budget, so anyway. But, but thank you for at least being willing to try to make their lives a little bit more decent up there.
Could I make a proposal?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I see on option three, flip the fire station and move a hundred feet. Is there a proposal to just flip the fire station and not move it?
Well, we're trying to move, flip it and move it out of the hundred-foot area. So, I tried to maintain the hundred feet that we talked about at, at the construction site for every one of the options.
Go to option one, please.
So, option one is you move the fire station east so it is a hundred feet away from the west property line of the fire station. That would mean moving the driveway, which is currently sixty-five feet away from the property line, to a hundred feet away from the property line and moving everything else up, all the buildings and the driveway up forty feet.
Okay, I went to option one just so I could see the footprint. I don't see an option where the west side of the building gets flipped and stays in position.
That would be, oh, you're right. It, it's flipped and the building, the lowest, the, the western part of the building is a hundred feet from the property line.
Is that a possibility? Do we have any data on that?
This, the option three is, is that, are you talking about not moving it?
Not moving, using this land, but flipping that part to the other side, to the east side of that building. That would open up, at the front entrance, it would open up the same amount of space buffer in the back.
Ma, ma, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Cato.
Let me make sure. So, what you, you are saying is flipping the bay driveway to where it would be facing the Dollar General end of the property? Is that what you're saying? Leaving the building where it's at, just flipping, flipping the structure to where the bay area would face Dollar General? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. The parking, so when you pull into the fire station, if you go to your right, there are parking spaces, there's an entrance to the building. And as my understanding, that is the sleeping quarters and the offices.
Yes, ma'am.
The bay is the larger part. If that portion of this project was on the other side.
Can I, can I interject, Madam Chair? So, if you do that, I think the quietest part of this building is where they sleep at, which is next to your home now.
Correct.
So, you don't want to do that, because when they go to run the fire engines, they're going to be that much closer to the residents and that much noisier.
Yes, I understand that, but it would provide this buffer at the entrance, it would provide that buffer all the way down the property. It wouldn't go like this, like a tier shape.
Mr. Tucker, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You, what about the drawing? Why would the drawing need to be redone? Couldn't the driveway just be shortened?
No, I'm not talking about the drawing needs to be redone. I, I, I just want to make sure we don't flip the access where the trucks come in and out.
Oh, no, no, no.
Do we own a ladder truck, do we own a ladder truck in the county?
No.
No, but the, the.
All those are diesel engines.
That's right. The, this is a thirty to fifty-year building. Fire services would like one day to have a, a ladder truck. So, we had the architect or the engineer designed it, design it so a ladder truck could get into the building by the loop around the back.
But we don't, we don't own a ladder truck?
That's correct. But it's, it's cheaper now to build a driveway five to six feet wider than it is later on to build it five or six feet wider. It's inflation, Jimmy. You got, you got inflation. You may have impacted.
Pete, I understand what inflation is.
Okay, that's, that's the cost I'm trying to.
I get it.
Can I make a proposal now? I propose, I propose that we allocate fifty thousand dollars that was in the line item for trees to, to the project for whatever use they see fit that, that's legal. Whether it be trees or a fence or some sort of something. And we let you guys determine that, not us. You live there, we don't.
Point of order might be legal. Do we need to select one of the options?
As it now stands, I think it's being built according to the.
No, right now, it's stopped.
Right now, it's stopped. But I mean, I think the council needs to confirm that it's going to be stopped. And if they pick another option, then I don't know what the funding requirements would be. I mean, there can be additional funding requirements, I think. Is that right, Mr. Templar?
Correct, correct.
So, if they just stop it, I think they need to provide the funding option to complete it if they want to complete it.
Okay. Can you go to the funding slide, please? Okay. Mr. Brazel, can you restate your motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars of funds that hopefully are already in our contingency and we won't have to allocate them from anywhere else.
Correct.
To create a buffer of some sort, any way, shape or form that the neighbors please. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Are you?
I'll second.
Mr. Cato seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Cato seconds. Any discussion?
I'll say this, I, I terribly sorry that you guys are having this situation. I know this was years in the making, um, you know, you moved to town, maybe you didn't realize what exactly was going on. Welcome to Kershaw County. We appreciate you being here, and I can tell you, the firemen are just some of the greatest people you'll ever meet. Um, make good friends with them, and I'm sure they'll invite you over for spaghetti or whatever they're having for supper. We, we want to, we want to help you where we can. Um, tax dollars are precious. We, we don't take this lightly, and, um, I think this is fair to you, and I, I hope you guys can see that we're really making an effort here. Thank you.
Right, call for a vote on.
Madam Chair. May I say something?
I want to thank you also. I, I know you were very upset that I had a family member in the car with me when I was talking to you, and, and they could hear everything, and, and, but you calmed down and you talked to me, and I, I just, I want to apologize for the fact that maybe I should have started educating myself a little bit sooner, but as you can see, things are a little bit hectic and a little bit different. Um, but I, I, I hope this will satisfy you and your wife's needs, and I, I think that Kershaw County, from here on out, will do what they can for the citizens to make sure this is done right, and, and that it never happens again. That's correct. So, you know, I, 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 I understand, I understand your, your point. I hope you understand our, our vision and our, our point on this. Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair.
Is it germane to the trees motion?
It is germane to the mount.
Okay.
I wanted to, just to make sure, you said fifty, fifty thousand for the trees.
Fifty thousand for the.
For, for the buffer, for the construction of the buffer, right?
Fifty thousand total dollars allocated towards any sort of buffer they want.
Yep, I'd, I'd, I'd like to even, maybe even leave it open to more than that, because we don't know how much that buffer is. I know y'all came in here, we're going to keep it at that location.
That's going to make it very difficult on our administrator.
Right, um, kind of coming in with proposed buffers, correct?
I, I agree that we have X amount of dollars, it's a finite amount of dollars in, um, contingency, and so this would be pulling from some of that contingency. So I, I think the opportunity is down the road, as we see we don't need this amount of contingency to have this as perhaps an ongoing.
If, if fifty thou- if we allocate fifty today, we, we know that's done, okay? Um, who knows what upsets the apple cart, and you, you would get nothing. If, if he sees he needs more, and, and there's some available in the project, I think we can bring that back up for discussion.
Fair enough.
Anything over twenty-five thousand dollars has to come before us. If it's, I think, five or ten more thousand, he can, he can do that on his own. Is that fair? Can we put it to a vote?
Yep.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to amend your motion, um, to allocate the total cost of a hundred and nine thousand, because that's what, that's what I understand we have to pass tonight, to continue forward.
With the fifty thousand of remobilization and demobilization, that's an arbitrary number because nothing has been
Moved.
demobilized or remobilized.
That is, that is their cost.
If they were to do it, that has not happened.
Well, they've, they've demobilized some, and if they came back, that would be about fifty thousand dollars.
I'm reading this retaining the existing location, which is what I think we're getting at.
Right.
Has a total cost of a hundred and nine thousand, so we need to approve that.
But I'm, I'm a little unclear on the remobilization. I mean, if they moved a Trico to another job site, and to move it back would not cost fifty thousand dollars. There's, there's absolutely no way. That, that's insanity. Um, and.
Well, didn't we just acknowledge that all the equipment was still at the site?
We did, it's still there.
The equipment's still at the site.
I would have to look at.
I can't.
So if the equipment's still at the site, we can, we can take that fifty thousand and then allot it to trees, so let's make it a hundred thousand.
I couldn't, well, we, it's so unclear at this point, I couldn't vote for that. I want to vote for something I can support, and something I know that, that we can do.
Okay, Mr. Templar, um, my expectation is you come back to county council with the remoeb and demoeb cost and construction cost, if any.
Right.
Okay.
He's got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we, we need to vote on the motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars.
Just to be clear, though.
Yes, Mr. DeBose.
The motion is to allocate fifty thousand dollars and to proceed with the present plan. So then he would come back with any cost that would exceed the present contract, as I understand it. Is that not correct?
I think what Madam Chair is asking for is the exact cost of the remobilization.
But you want to stop the project.
For clarification, if we're moving forward, as I understand this chart, the total cost is a hundred and nine thousand, so do we need to approve a hundred and ninety thousand to move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
A hundred and ninety?
A hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine thousand, yes, that's correct. And it needs, and it would come from the fire fund now, incidentally, we'd have a fire district, so it wouldn't come from the general fund, it would have to come from fire district funds.
And there's fifty K already allocated for trees.
I'm thoroughly confused at this point. So you're talking about the fire district fund. We're talking about money that was borrowed in a bond that has contingency money available.
Right, this, this is within the scope of the project. These costs are, would be included in the cost of the project that we have from the defeasement of the bond, um, about seven million dollars. So this was allocated for this project, so this, these funds would not come from general fund or fire fund or anything. It's already.
But it comes from the bond.
Right.
You, you would propose it comes out of a contingency then?
That, that was my proposal, yes, sir. That money was already allocated towards this project. You wouldn't have to take it from any other budget line item.
No, sir, no, sir.
No, I'm not trying, I'm just trying to make sure that, uh, Mr. Templar has, uh, this chart says to retain the current location. So to start tomorrow and move forward, the total cost is a hundred and nine thousand. Is, is what he's telling us.
But we were just, okay, so the fifty thousand dollar line item that says remobilization and demobilization, that hasn't happened. That's fictitious.
We, we will, we will not pay, they will give us an invoice for demoeb and moeb, okay?
If we vote.
If you, if you vote to go forward, they will be requested to give us an invoice specifically related to demoeb and remoeb.
And yet they haven't moved the equipment?
All the, all the cost, there are costs associated with moving people out, moving, getting stuff done.
So we've cost ourselves
That's, that's.
Fifty thousand dollars just to talk about this, is what you're telling me.
Basically. That is a rough estimate of the demoeb and remoeb cost.
So.
If it turns.
So that money's already spent, so we can't allocate that line item towards the buffer.
I'm not concerned about the line item right now. I'm, what was presented to me is options. Option one will cost a hundred and nine, and it's moving forward with trees.
I'm just so sad that we've lost fifty thousand dollars to remobilization and, and demobilization, but.
I'm not, there's a citizen in Kershaw County that had a concern.
Bad planning on the county's part.
Let's continue with our vote.
There was an amendment on the table, is there a second? For the one oh nine?
I amend Mr. Brazel's motion for fifty thousand to trees to take the amount up to a hundred and nine thousand dollars to retain the existing location, which includes the fifty thousand dollars in trees.
Right, and I was, I'm asking who's the second on that amendment?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
What about Mr. Brazel's, uh, motion?
Where?
It's amended at this point, if, if we amend it, I, I'm just still a little bit unclear on how and why we spent the fifty thousand dollars.
I can come up with a number, a, a basis for the, for.
It's up to fifty thousand dollars?
It's up to fifty.
So it may, it may be ten or fifteen thousand.
Right.
It may be thirty to forty thousand dollars.
I just, I, I just don't, my point is, I just don't want to be taken advantage of.
We will, we will have a, I will request a separate cost account for demoeb and remoeb associated with cessation, and I will request a specific invoice, one line item, for demoeb and remoeb. So the county council will have a full and open understanding of the costs associated with the five days delay.
And then the nine thousand dollars in question is a quality cost estimate range?
I didn't understand your question.
The, the, the line item, it says nine thousand dollars. Um, wha- what is that?
That could be any other work, if, if the site was, had erosion as a result of the rain, and they had to go back and add soil in, then the county would pay for that because it occurred during the cessation.
Let's get, let's get it voted on so these folks can get, get their.
I guess my point is, Mr. Templar needs an allocation of a hundred and nine thousand to move forward tomorrow.
Looks like it.
Up to.
Looks like it.
So I'm asking my colleagues to increase that amount to allow him to get back to the project, and it includes the trees.
Yep, agreed.
Call for the question?
Right, a call for a vote on the amendment to Mr. Brazel's motion to allocate a hundred and nine thousand to retain the existing location of the Cassett Fire Station. All in favor? Mr. Brazel, Mr. Tucker, myself, Mr. Jones, Mr. Tomlinson, and Mr. Cato.
Now we have to address the amended motion.
Main motion.
Right.
Motion as amended.
Right, at, the motion as amended.
The motion as amendment. And, Mr. Brazel, I forget the entire.
Restate your motion.
Will you restate it?
The new motion, it's, it's your motion.
It's yours.
Okay, okay.
You're voting your motion now.
Now we'll vote on the motion as amended, which includes Mr. Brazel's motion that we spend fifty thousand dollars on trees for a buffer. Which is now a hundred and nine thousand. All in favor? Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, myself, Mr. Tucker, and Mr. Brazel.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Find my agenda.
Mr. Templar.
Yes, sir.
Your new, please keep us informed of what's going on.
I will.
Because in the past, uh, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
To Madam Chair's point, I will report next council meeting with the specifics and, and.
On any projects in the future?
Of, of course, absolutely.
Um, and to the Gadsbys, um, thank you for bringing this to, this to our attention. Um, there was a lot of things we found out through this process that is going to make government better. Um, I'm sorry that we couldn't move it, um, with the inflation cost. Um, we would have done this due diligence for any citizen in this county because we work for the people of Kershaw County, and everyone in the government center does as well, okay? So, um, there's no apology from me that we took this much time, or we dove this deep, or that we spent any money demoving. We will now move on to old business. We don't have any old business. And council briefings. Um, Mr. Tucker, can you go first, please?
Yes, ma'am, I would just like to say I have at this time no briefing, but I would like to tell the, uh, Gadsbys that, um, you know, I'm here as well to do whatever we can, and I did happen to ride by your place yesterday and took pictures, and any way that I can be of help, please feel free to reach out, and my information is on the website. I thank all of you, um, for your support, and I'm going to dismiss myself because I have to go and check in at my job. They probably think I've ran away. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Drive safe. Mr. Brazel.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Cato.
Just a, just a few comments. First of all, I, I want to thank the Gadsbys for your cooperation and, and, and for the, the intel that you've provided. I think you've opened a lot of eyes with some things that we probably need, that we can do better in this county. So I thank you for that. I refer, there's a lot of first responders here, a lot of firemen. I want to thank them for their service. They, they really go above and beyond for this county, and I want to thank them for everything that they do. I look forward to continuing to work with this council and, and the people of all over Kershaw County, so thank you.
Mr. Tomlinson?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Jones?
To the Gadsbys, at least something came out of it, okay? And, and we have, I think we have learned, Mr. Templar's learned, I've learned, that we need to stick, we need to be briefed and know what's going on. And, um, I wish y'all the best. And anybody who's upset with you getting a buffer, it must be personal. Okay? The fire department was never going to lose their fire department, never was going to lose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have two things tonight, um, so this council is actively working on the comprehensive plan and updating the zoning codes and regulations, and in the spirit of that, Mr. Templar, I would like, um, Kershaw, Vision Kershaw twenty thirty, also known as Vision twenty thirty, removed from the county website. And also the signature line of the employee emails. When you click the link, it takes you to the website, and, um, Michael Conley is listed as the point of contact, and he's no longer with us. Um, so there's no reason to send people to that website.
Go, Madam Chair.
Oh, right, um, there is a Veterans Breakfast that is every fourth Tuesday at Pine Grove Baptist Church in Lugoff, and it's at nine AM. It is open for all veterans, um, to attend. And, um, I would like to see, um, well, I just wanted to put that out and invite everyone to that. Um, it's great fellowship, and it's a great thing for camaraderie for veterans to do that. It's completely free. Um, tell your friends, and they met this morning. It's an amazing group of people.
Where?
Where? Pine Grove Baptist Church in Lugoff.
Thank you, I know where it's at.
Um, and in the, in the same spirit, so I've received a lot of interest in establishing a Kershaw County Veterans Parade. Um, that is something I would love to see happen in Kershaw County, and if there are people out there interested in organizing that, um, you would have my full support, and that is all.
Madam Chair.
May I, just as a way of information, say something?
Sure.
I also want to, want to put it out there that the Mount Pisgah Resource Center is now open. Um, it's the resource center that was established up at the old elementary school, Mount Pisgah Elementary School. They have a workout room, they have, they're opening on Sunday evenings for recreation and basketball. So if you get a chance to go out, um, or go up there and visit them, um, they are open and, and up and running, and they've really done a lot of work up there.
Thank you. Um, to the administrator.
Thank you all. I, um, I think this was a very productive meeting. I think there was, um, the, the in-depth discussion on the fire house location, I think was very productive. It's, it's formative for council, for me, my staff, to better understand what we could do better in the future, to learn from this. Um, I'm, I'm just a big believer in learning from the pinch points. Madam Chair even mentioned something about, I think during our discussions, of having a, some signage saying future site, that, that's certainly going to be incorporated into what we do.
Awesome.
So, eh, moving forward, we will make concerted efforts to reach out to surrounding property owners, um, and be more considerate. Um, even if they are a little further away, it's, it's, it could be things with noise and light pollution and things of that matter, so, um, we can always be better, and, um, we will look to learn from this, eh, from this organization standpoint, in the way we do business going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Templar. That's compassion.
Thank you.
Legal briefing, Mr. DeBose.
Madam Chairperson, I have nothing.
Um, there'll be no executive sessions tonight, and do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor of adjournment? Mr. Cato, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. Jones, myself, Mr. Brazel? Right, this meeting is adjourned.